Joyce Manwaring, Parks and Recreation Director.
Heather Meyer, City Councilwoman.
Travis Starker, District 1.
Tracy Lingworthy, District 4.
Kristy Davis, District 2.
Bud Starker, District Number 1.
District 2, Mr. Gerald, District 3.
Genevieve Woodin, District 4.
George Pond, District 3.
Ken Johnson, Community Development.
Scott Brink, Director of Public Works.
Chris Randall, Virginia City.
Nathan Mosley, Management Analyst with the City of Wheat Ridge.
Larry Schultz, Tricia.
Patrick Goff, City Manager.
Okay, we have some public that will be speaking tonight. Is there someone who has signed up? No? Yes. Oh, yes, we have two people. Go ahead and go to the podium and give us your name, address, and spell your last name for the clerk who isn't here right now. But it'll be on the record.
All right, testing, testing, okay. My name is Rachel Hultin. My last name is spelled H-U-L-T-I-N. And I live at 4690 Balsam Street in the fair city of Wheat Ridge. I just want to make a couple of comments today in regards to the hopefully discussed pier street bike lane improvements tonight. A couple of things I just want to let everybody know that tomorrow night, the Active Transportation Advisory Group will be meeting at Colorado Plus at 6:30. And we are a citizen-led group that is trying to work with the city to help advance active transportation interests in the city like pedestrian and bike investment. Several of our members have had a chance to review the study session packet, and I just want to share a couple of points of feedback that come from our group. One thing is they're just really excited to see it moving forward, and they appreciate Director Brink's thorough review of the options. And they recognize that it's a difficult corridor given the varying ride-away widths. There was a general thought that signage alone really does not adequately create the type of bike facility that would create the strong north-south corridor that we're hoping to create. And given that we are looking to create really strong bike route tie-ins to 38th Avenue as part of our vision for that corridor, we really want to make sure that we're creating bike facilities that are friendly for less confident riders and families so that they feel they can come from the feeding neighborhoods and enjoy 38th Avenue as that starts to come together. And on that note, I look forward to the rest of the discussion. Thank you.
Joyce Manwaring, Parks and Recreation Director.
Tracy Lingwerly, District Four.
Kristi Davis, District Two.
Bud Starker, District Number One.
District Two, Mr. Gerald, District Three.
Genevieve Wooden, District Four.
George Pond, District Three.
Scott Brink, Director of Public Works.
Nathan Mosley, Management Analyst with the City of Wheat Ridge.
Larry Schultz, Tricia.
Patrick Goff, City Manager.
Okay, we have some public that will be speaking tonight. Is there someone who has signed up? No? Yes. Oh, yes, we have two people. Go ahead and go to the podium and give us your name, address, and spell your last name for the clerk who isn't here right now, but it'll be on the record.
All right, testing, testing, okay. My name is Rachel Hultin. My last name is spelled H-U-L-T-I-N, and I live at forty-six ninety Balsam Street in the fair city of Wheat Ridge. I just want to make a couple of comments today in regards to the hopefully discussed Pier Street bike lane improvements tonight. A couple of things I just want to let everybody know that tomorrow night, the Active Transportation Advisory Group will be meeting at Colorado Plus at six-thirty, and we are a citizen-led group that is trying to work with the city to help advance active transportation interests in the city like pedestrian and bike investment. Several of our members have had a chance to review the study session packet, and I just want to share a couple of points of feedback that come from our group. One thing is they're just really excited to see it moving forward, and they appreciate Director Brink's thorough review of the options, and they recognize that it's a difficult corridor given the varying ride-away widths. There was a general thought that signage alone really does not adequately create the type of bike facility that would create the strong north-south corridor that we're hoping to create. And given that we are looking to create really strong bike route tie-ins to Thirty-Eighth Avenue as part of our vision for that corridor, we really want to make sure that we're creating bike facilities that are friendly for less confident riders and families so that they feel they can come from the feeding neighborhoods and enjoy Thirty-Eighth Avenue as that starts to come together. And on that note, I look forward to the rest of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And your name, sir, please.
Hello, my name is Adam Wiley, W-Y-L-I-E. I live at ninety-eight sixty-five West Thirty-Fifth Avenue in Wheat Ridge, relatively new resident of just under a year. One of the reasons we've located here was for its location and access to all areas. I'm generally excited about the Bike Pedmaster Plan and the plans that you're discussing about Pier Street specifically. I commute it every day year-round on my bike, and definitely some opportunity for improvement there, but it's also a great location to spend those dollars you have allocated and create some safe routes for all travelers, bikes, pedestrians, and vehicles as well. So I just wanted to kind of express that general support for the efforts to improve the safe travel on that route. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Is there any other? I don't see any other.
Ron, did you want to speak?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ron.
Hi, I'm Ron Kiefer from Wheat Ridge Cyclery, local residence here with my father Eugene, and we'd just like to, my brother-in-law Gil's been the one that's been working hard with the different groups on this, and so he just asked me to speak a little tonight in that certainly as a bicycle business, we support the efforts. I know that there's been a lot of work going into Pierce and the different routes and connections, and so this is Pierce, you know, has been talked about, one of the connectors to the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor, and so we'd like to ensure that we have safe routes to the corridor and through the city. So, you know, our support is heartily behind it, and so are our customers. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we have one more. Please give your name and address.
Hello, Christian Teagarden, Edgewater Council Member, two-four-seven-nine Chase Street. Just wanted to comment on the proposal of the bike lanes on Pier Street. Pier Street is a major thoroughfare that connects our neighborhood to Thirty-Eighth Avenue. I drive up it every single day to go to work at Summit Center, and if there was some more bike lanes, I might be able to work off this tummy. So I have a personal invested interest in this, so thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And is there anyone else? I don't see anybody else. This is our legislative session, and we do this annually because it's important that our council has a strong connection with the legislators as well as understanding the legislative-type activities that always trickle-down, that famous trickle-down word, to the different activities within our city. So there'll be lots of opportunity tonight to ask questions. And Sue, are you going to start with a mayon here? Oh, wait. Mr. Starker, I believe you had an announcement or well, or wanted to say something?
Thank you, Mayor Jay. I just wanted to sort of go through a little bit of procedure stuff. I'm the Wheat Ridge representative on the CML Policy Committee. CML is the Colorado Municipal League. They're somewhat our lobbying group in the state legislature. They track bills of interest to cities in the state. So I attend their policy meetings, you know, I want to say two or three or four times a year. It's not particularly frequent, but they also send updates on their issues that come before them or that they're aware of that are of interest to the city. Zach Urban is the alternate for that committee also. So if you, and as part of that, I will sort of try to stay abreast of the issues that CML believes are of interest to municipal government and bring those sort of policy questions and information back and forth to the councils. So hopefully we will have, and Nathan, I don't know, sort of a quarterly or a periodic, you know, opportunity before the council at a study session to sort of brief you on what the issues are. So, and if there's any time that something comes up that you think would be of interest to take back to the policy, get a hold of Zach or Nathan or myself, and we will see if we can move that forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starker. Mr. Urban, you're looking at me like you wanted to say something? Okay. All right, Sue Shafer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Starker. I just received the CML Legislative Priorities in my mailbox today. I really appreciate knowing who the person is, and I want to thank all of you Wheat Ridge leaders and council members and our mayor. Congratulations to all of you who are newly elected. I have great confidence in the way this city is moving. I think you may have heard that this will be my last official visit with you because I opted not to seek a fourth term due to many family responsibilities. I have family here in Colorado, New York City with a brand-new granddaughter there, other family in Fort Worth, Texas. My mother gave me a great opportunity to have a professional career as an educator and in a political career also by helping me take care of my children, so I want to pay it back to my family. And you all have heard that our families take a lot of sacrifices for us to be in elected office, and I know your families do too. So I've just decided it's time to give back to my family. And I want to announce tonight that I have made a decision to endorse Christian Teagarden for House District Twenty-four. I didn't know that Christian was coming here tonight, but I feel he is the best candidate that has announced so far. He's on the Board of Directors of the Wheat Ridge Business Association. He's an elected official from Edgewater. He has worked at the Golden Taj Mahal on the first Judicial District Criminal Justice Committee, and I think he has the experience, the knowledge, the passion to really move our district, which is Edgewater, Mountain View, Wheat Ridge, and Golden, to move us forward. And that's really the focus of our legislative session this year. It's recovery, recovery from the two thousand and eight recession and recovery from the floods and the wildfires. So I'm very sorry that Senator John cannot be here. Does that mean I get her fifteen minutes, Madam Mayor? Yeah, we'll deal. Hey, where did my fifteen minutes go? No, I'll be as brief as possible. What I'd like to do is share the priorities that I'm hearing from the legislature. And on your yellow sheet that I distributed to you are some of the bills that I've been working on, and then I'd like to hear from you, what your priorities are, what your concerns are, what bills you hear that are coming that you would like me and Senator John to know about, and I'll be sure to get back to her on that. First, I want to thank our clerk, Janelle Shaver, for contacting me about the Colorado Local Government Election Code, which applies to nonpartisan elections not coordinated by the county clerk, and this does align with the election reform bill from last year, thirteen oh-three, that did pass out of the House on Thursday. Another interesting bill, House Bill Ten Seventeen, I think you're all very interested in that, Expanding Availability of Affordable Housing. This makes changes to existing housing development grant funds that expand possible sources of funding and lists of who can receive the loans and the grants. And I know we have a big need here in Wheat Ridge for affordable housing, as do many other cities in our state. This bill also, the expanding the availability of affordable housing, will revive low-income housing tax credits that provide incentives for the private sector to build affordable housing. So that's good to have an incentive in there for the private sector. Another one I could mention, House Bill Number One and Senate Bill Number One. House Bill Number One means this is a very, very high priority for us, and that's going to be the income tax credit for a taxpayer that owes property tax on property destroyed by a natural cause. Now, we here in Wheat Ridge were very blessed not to suffer the extreme damages that parts of Golden and Jefferson County did suffer, but as a good neighbor to all of our friends around the state, the northwest area of House District Twenty-four here, still there are people who don't have a home, they don't have a car, they don't have a job, and they don't have food. So this income tax credit will be for those folks who are in recovery from the floods, and certainly they are in serious need of economic help. Now, everybody's talking about jobs. That's another priority for us at the House. We have House Bill Thirteen, and I thought you'd be interested in this, and I brought the full text of this bill. It's called the Advanced Industries Jobs Bill, and I was going to bring it for Steve Art or for whomever now is dealing with jobs, but this is a bill to give some incentives for our businesses who are in the STEM fields or are in aerospace and bioscience fields, you know, science, technology, engineering, and math, to give them some grants so they can hire or give the experience of working in a STEM field to an intern. We definitely need to encourage students of any age to get an internship or an apprenticeship in a business, working in these advanced industries. So I think that would be a very good bill, and while I'm on that topic, as an educator, I'm very concerned about the lack of young people going into the STEM fields. When I was out visiting international paper, that's kind of on the border between Edgewater and Golden, or I mean Wheat Ridge and Golden, the director there told me he has mechanics, electricians, and welders retiring, and he cannot find enough people with those skills. And he doesn't know what he's going to do when those, mostly men, retire. So I'm very passionate about our schools, our community college, School of Mines, our young people, whatever we as leaders can do to help encourage people to, you know, if they want a good job, to think about the STEM fields, whether it's a certificate at the community college or an apprenticeship somewhere with a business. We really have to make more of an effort in those areas. Okay, now Senate Bill One that Senator John is sponsoring, and it's not, I don't think it's on this yellow sheet here, under Education. Oh, it is. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Larry. Senate Bill One, it's under Bills to Follow. It's the third one down. Making College Education More Affordable by Restricting Tuition Increases to Six Percent Maximum and Allotting Hundred Million Dollars for Financial Aid. I think this is very important because many students are out of reach for college education because the tuition has gone up sometimes as much as ten or eleven percent every year. So we're putting a cap on that tuition increase for all of our institutions of higher education, except for the Colorado School of Mines. There's some kind of an old law that exempts the School of Mines from these bills, but they have quite a foundation that they are able to keep some of the best and the brightest students from Colorado and from all over the country at an affordable rate. So that would be Senator John's request that we all support Senate Bill One. And on my yellow sheet here, you can see the bills that I'm sponsoring. Let me just mention the first one, under Healthcare, up at the top on the yellow sheet. We passed this out of the House today on second reading, which is where everybody gets to tell you how bad your bill is. But what happened, you've heard about the waiting list for persons in our district who have an intellectual and a developmental disability, and this waiting list has grown to about nine thousand people across the state. So I worked with a coalition of advocates for the intellectually and developmentally disabled people. I got a bipartisan or a Republican sponsor on the bill. We were able to get some state agencies to say there will be no fiscal note on that bill. That's always a good thing when you can get state agencies to say we're not going to have to pay more, but we're going to be able to reduce this waiting list for persons who are not capable of taking care of themselves because of an intellectual disability, and that waiting list will be reduced by the year twenty-twenty. And I'm very excited about that, that it came out of the House on second reading today. So the other bills I would mention on my sheet, public safety is a huge priority for me, along with taking care of people who are vulnerable. That one on House Bill Eleven Thirty-One about making cyberbullying against a minor by a minor a Class II misdemeanor. If the intent was to harass the minor because of race, ethnicity, or sexual orientation, that is a hate crime, then the crime is a Class I misdemeanor. And public safety, we've had too many shootings and unsafe school incidents. So that Safe-to-Tell number is a hotline where any student, parent, or adult can call and get the Attorney General and law enforcement to investigate that incident, even if there was nothing to be concerned about, just to have this toll-free number for adults, teachers, students, parents to call when they have even suspicion of someone who could hurt himself or herself or other people, other adults or other children in the school. So that's an important one, and there are hundreds of bills coming through already, but I'd really like to hear from you what your priorities are. And I see urban renewal, no more unfunded mandates, local tax authority, sustainability in water, and all the other CML priorities. So I'm sorry I don't know more of Senator John's bills. Otherwise, I would speak about them.
Sue, I wanted to let you know there should be a packet underneath there, and so it will also include a piece that will show you the city of Wheat Ridge's legislative priorities. So there should be a little trifold that's attached with a paperclip at the front, so underneath the agenda. So this is the same sort of concept, but this breaks it down a little more specifically to Wheat Ridge, and then we're going to have a few people go over some of the things that are included in here for you tonight.
Thank you, Nathan. Well, this is very clear. I appreciate this. So hopefully your priorities will fold with our state priorities, and you know, at the state, we have to balance the interests of the cities, the counties, the special districts, and the state. So we try to be fair to everybody, but it's very important for me and Senator John to hear from you, because I get about three hundred emails a day and a lot of papers. So this is very attractive. Whoever did this, thank you very much. Heather, is this your doing? Nathan, thank you very much. Appreciate this. So
You're welcome.
Why don't I hear from you, what your priorities or concerns, questions are? We're low on these. We have a specific order of discussion, and I believe Mr. Goff would have some, would start that, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I will start with a few economic development bills and potential bills that might be coming out, and I think we have a list here of everybody have a topic to speak to. So I'll start quickly. Speaking of Sherri, of Senator John, she is carrying a bill that we are definitely in favor of, and it's Senate Bill Seventy-three, which is the Brownfields Tax Credit. You're familiar with that. If you've been paying attention of what's going on in Wheat Ridge lately, you know, we're really taking advantage of the economic turnaround, and we need to protect and use all the tools that are available out there, and there's a lot of brownfields in Wheat Ridge. And there's a lot of brownfields in Wheat Ridge. Kristi Davis is on our Urban Authority, so she's been working closely on some of those projects. Seems like every project we start to deal with on redevelopment, there's some type of contamination issues. So any type of tax credit that could help that project move along would definitely be helpful to us. So we support that wholeheartedly. And the biggest bill I think that we're most concerned about, or a potential bill, there's nothing introduced yet, but is on urban renewal and TIF, Tax Increment Financing. As you know, this has been probably every year it's been touched somewhat, the urban renewal law has. There's rumors that the county, CCI, is going to be proposing a bill. It hasn't been introduced yet, but they're probably looking at automatic sharebacks with all taxing districts, I think 50%. So if that happens, it's basically going to kill tax increment financing and the ability to use it as a tool to redevelop properties. We have numerous projects in the city right now that we're contemplating using tax increment financing, the 38th and Wadsworth site, the old Go Ford dealership is, as you know, a very blighted site right now, has been for a couple of years, it's vacant. And we haven't got an actual TIF request from the developer yet, but in discussions we know that we're going to, to make that project work, there's going to have to be some type of city shareback of property and/or sales tax to make that happen. Speaking of brownfields, that's a, there's a brownfield site there. The city's working with, hopefully, the EPA and the Colorado State Department of Health to get a piece of that property cleaned up. So there's always, infill redevelopment is expensive. And, you know, today's urban renewal law has been restricted to urban infill and redevelopment projects. As you remember, the cities and CML compromised over the last couple of years and made sure that we took out the greenfield redevelopments, which was a kind of contentious issue for some folks in the state. So I think we all agree that that wasn't the intent of urban renewal, the intent of urban renewals, to remove blight. So we feel we've made quite a few compromises on this bill, and it's getting to a point where I don't think we can compromise anymore. The tool, any more compromises to the law will basically kill the use of the tool. Another project we're working on in Wheat Ridge is 38th and Kipling, the southwest corner, where the, there's an old family, there's an old Safeway store that is now a family thrift store and a Starbucks, and quite a bit of blight also on that site. And we did receive a TIF application. We actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to meet with the developer to talk about, to negotiate how much TIF would be required to make that happen. And again, there's a lot of public infrastructure needs on a lot of our projects, drainage. Wheat Ridge has a lot of drainage issues, utilities, a lot of overhead power lines which could be undergrounded, need for sidewalk curb and gutter and those type of public amenities. And that's what we're hoping to continue using this tool for. So basically, our stance on this now is to oppose any legislation that reduces the effectiveness of the TIF tool that we have for urban renewal. So I'm going to stop there, and we'll move on with our agenda unless you have any questions on that one specifically.
Thank you. I'm waiting for that bill to come, too. I thought, coming to the Wheat Ridge City Council tonight, I better get informed about the TIF bill that's coming. So we're all anxiously awaiting to see it. But it is, I would like to see the counties and the cities have a compromise. You've said you've compromised as much as you can. It's very difficult for us to see the cities and the counties at odds, and I know you feel that way, too. But I can assure you, I will give it a fair hearing and see if we can, some magically way, make it a win-win for the cities and the counties.
Other council members, if you need to ask something about these specific bills, please feel free to raise your hand and join the conversation. We have a couple other planned ones, but Bud, you look like you may. No.
I had a different bill that I was going to, or a different topic that I was going to move to and speak to Representative Schaefer about. And that is, as you're aware, or probably aware, we have, in Colorado, gotten into a position to where we're not building much multifamily housing. And that's partially driven by a perception that the insurance coverage has not been available due to a number and severe litigation with respects to construction defects. And I know that Dr. Cog and the Metro Caucus of Mayors has been concerned about this. And there may be legislation moving forward. I don't know that there's actually been a bill drafted, but dealing with sort of a couple of issues were to make alternative dispute resolution, ADR, a feature of homeowner covenants that would, that would try to work through any issues and construction defects with the builders and developers and the homeowners themselves. And another one was in the homeowner, homeowner associations, apparently it's reasonably easy, or at least doesn't require an affirmative vote of all of the homeowners in an association to go into litigation with respect to construction defects. And I understand that frequently, that smaller groups, rather than 100% of all the homeowners, may be able to initiate that, which can sometimes tie up, tie up properties unintentionally. And so there may be some legislation coming forward. We have, as you know, fast tracks has been, has been, has been built and is being built. And part of the hope for that, and I'm sure we hope in Wheat Ridge, that at the Ward Street Station, that we're able to build, you know, multifamily housing and for-sale housing. And it seems that we've fallen into a situation where most multifamily housing is strictly apartment or rental, rental units, and that the pendulum may have swung in a direction that has some unintended consequences. So if you would just maybe be alert to that when and if an issue hits the floor, I would appreciate it.
Definitely. Thank you. I'll be looking for that, and if you'll be good enough to keep me informed, I'd appreciate it.
That's a big one, Bud. What I understand is that construction of housing that first-time buyers can purchase, which is usually a condominium, is down to 2%, which is pretty tremendous, quite a drop, which makes it very difficult for our city, as well as, since we are, as Bud mentioned, we are going to have a TOD site. That is an absolute perfect place to build that type of a condominium. And so we really want to be watching this legislation, legislature. Another question, or should we move on?
I think Mr. Brennan is next. He's dealing with an incident right now, I think, on his phone, so I think he's here with us still. Job never ends.
Briefly here. So thank you, Representative Schaefer. I do appreciate, I think you know, our working relationship as it comes to bills that impact public safety and your willingness, and Sherry's willingness, to listen to those issues and talk to us. The school bullying, bully, bill, I can't even talk, bullying and the Safe to Tell are certainly important from a law enforcement perspective, and we appreciate your support of those bills. The one bill I was asked to talk to just briefly today about is House Bill 141152, the passive surveillance records. And this is a bill that would put constraints on law enforcement for the amount of time we could keep records from a passive surveillance, they're obtained from passive surveillance. So this would be your auto license plate readers, this would be, you know, the camera systems that larger communities use. And the six-month restriction that is being proposed in the bill is pretty onerous in terms of how it might be used. And I'll give you an example, a local example. Two years ago, we had a homicide in Wheat Ridge, and it was particularly brutal homicide. It was a stabbing. And during the course of that investigation, we made arrests right away. But 14 months later, and just going through and looking at our auto license plate reader information, we were able to put the suspect's vehicle in the area of the homicide during that timeframe of the homicide. It was actually before the homicide, so it just went to show, to help us demonstrate culpability. And there are a number of other situations where that information is really, really helpful to law enforcement from a homeland security perspective, from the investigation of crimes. And we certainly understand, you know, the individual rights issue that's involved in that. And we'd ask, you know, legislature to certainly look at that, give a lot of consideration to maybe making that a two-year restriction, because it gets down sometimes to the point of you don't know what you, what you don't know until you have a situation, you start to look at your records. Right now, by law, you know, with DNA, we're required to keep DNA evidence forever if it's involved in a crime. And I've used some of this information in a similar vein, and I think that this compromise that can be worked out and would be less restrictive than the six-month. And then I believe the judge was going to speak to House Bill 141061.
Lee, thanks, Chief. Jerry, did you want to give an overview, or is there anything? I probably have more of a specific analysis than you have more of a...
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, 1061. Sure. Apologizing on the ran out of chairs for the city attorney, no chairs for the city attorney. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I got, I'm going to stand for a spot.
Just so you use a mic.
Hi, Representative, I'm Jerry Dahl, the city attorney. I know we've known each other for many years, and it's good to see you. The judge will have more specific things to add on House Bill 1061. That's sponsored by Representative Salazar and the Senate, Senator Guzman. It's been assigned to House Judiciary, and if I were still at the municipal league, I'd be able to tell you exactly where in the process it is right now. But I'm no longer at the league, and I don't have my status sheet and Sam Mamet's little notes to tell me. But I'm assuming it hasn't gotten through committee yet, if you're aware of that. In any event, likely, if it gets through committee, it'll get to the, to the House. This bill is, has been initiated really by ACLU of Colorado. They engaged in a couple or a year and a half-long effort to pull court records from various municipalities surrounding the issue of what they call pay-or-serv warrants. You may have remembered about a month ago or so, there was an editorial, there was an article, and then an editorial in Denver Post about debtors' prison. And the sort of story for public consumption is, the courts are putting people in jail because they can't pay their fines, and if they're indigent, that's debtors' prison, and that's unconstitutional. It's a bad thing. They named a number of cities, Wheat Ridge chief among them, as the sinners in that, in that regard. And so there's an article that was followed by an editorial, you know, they've got their act together, they do it in the right order, there's the article, the editorial, and then the bill introduced. As usual with these things, it's more complicated than that. And the real concern that we have is this, municipal courts impose jail for a variety of things. It's one of the enforcement techniques that, as a judge, and the judge will underscore this, you have and you have to have. If you don't have a way to enforce your order that someone pay restitution, that someone go to community service, that someone pay the fine that there was assessed because they pled guilty just a minute ago to municipal ordinance violation speeding, now there's a fine. If you don't pay, very often that is one of the enforcement techniques the court has. Now, the story is kind of, it's been described as, gee, it's that simple. If you can't pay, then off to jail you go. And of course, there are a whole series of procedural steps that the court goes through and in terms of, and I'll let the judge elaborate on the extraordinary lengths to which the municipal court goes in, in working with defendants, payment plans, et cetera. We get it that if you're claiming indigency, you should have some rights, and we accord those. I think what ACLU is focusing on, and we have engaged in a little bit of a dialogue with them, they've sent us a letter, talked to their lawyer last Friday, we're going to be sending them another letter saying, here's what we're really doing, here's what we aren't doing. Does that change your view? Do you really need this bill? Do you really need to be coming down on us? So we'll see how that, how that goes. But what I wanted to at least tell you is this, House Bill 1061 is in the process. The league is assigned, is it Megan Anne Story?
Yes.
Is the staffer at the league that's following that. And so I really encourage you to make sure you get her handout and listen to her as it works its way through the process. We're not sure that the amendments that the league is pushing are going to be successful or will fully address the concerns that we have about the additional procedural costs and other costs imposed potentially upon municipal courts. And right now, upon state courts, so your county courts, it'll be interesting to see if there's a fiscal note and it's off to appropriations, but that's, it's a whole other game. But wanted to alert you to the bill, tell you that there's more to it, that we really feel strongly that we're kind of wrongly accused. And I'd ask the judge to elaborate on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, as professionally, I can't take any stand on it as good or bad, but I can point out some of the misconceptions it's based on, some of the negative unintended consequences that it would have, how it's going to impact cost-wise and staff-wise. And also, it conflicts with some city ordinances and state statutes, and it conflicts with one state statute in such a way that it's going to impact victims. But first of all, here are some of the misconceptions I saw in the editorial and the article in the paper. First of all, nobody is jailed at sentencing who cannot pay a fine. Nobody. Second of all, no one is incarcerated who is truly unable to pay a fine. And the article seems to hint otherwise. When you're sentenced, you either get a fine or jail. I would say most people get a fine. And the ones who receive a fine are warned that the fine is required, that's a part of your sentence. And if you don't pay it, a warrant will go out. The warrant doesn't go out because you're poor, it doesn't go out because you have the ability or the inability to pay, it goes out because you failed to show up, you failed to request time to pay, you failed to request a payment plan, you failed to request some alternative to sentencing. And I don't want to say everybody, but I'm going to say 99.9% of people who plead guilty and get a fine, almost automatically get 30 days to pay. And then in that 30 days, if you provide financial information to demonstrate the necessity to have a payment plan, you get a payment plan. And I would say, I don't want to say everybody gets a payment plan, but 99.9% of people get a payment plan. When you're on a payment plan, we'll work with you. So if you need to move this, today's payment to the end of the plan, we'll move it to the end of the plan. But it's the, when you're on that payment plan, if you don't come in and make the payment, we still don't issue a bench warrant. You get a letter that says you've got a couple of weeks to come in and make a payment, and then we will issue a warrant. That's when the warrant goes out. And that is not in the article in the Denver Post. Then, if that's not enough process, when you are finally arrested, you can come up with the money, and you don't, you won't be taken to jail, you can post a cash bond. And then for those that either can't or won't post a cash bond, I see them, they get to have a hearing and explain why they didn't pay after they had 30 days, and why when they were on a payment plan, they didn't have to, they didn't make a payment. So they still get a chance to explain what their situation is. Only then might they be incarcerated, and they can be incarcerated under a state statute now, up to 15 days. What the judges in, the municipal judges in Colorado have done, though, is we picked what it costs to house a prisoner for a day, and we're using $50 now, and divide that into the balance due, and that's how many days you serve. So if you owe $50, you serve one day. Hence, the term pay or serve, that's where it came from. But it's not that inflexible, it's not automatically 100% jail or pay. As you can see, there's way more to it than that. As you can see, there's way more to it than, than that.
And I, I guess what I would ask is as it moves through the process, uh, we're going to continue to try to work with ACLU sort of bilaterally, uh, with luck, we'll make some progress. I'm not certain that will change, and I'm not the ACLU, but I'm not certain that'll change their desire to, to push ten sixty-one because they looked at other cities, uh, who knows? But in any event, we'll, we'll certainly keep you informed about what we are able to work out with them, if anything. Uh, but we'd ask that you, um, just pay attention to what Megan Ann says be, uh, to you on the bill because I know she's working with them formally in terms of amendments that would be proposed. Uh, and you'll, you'll hear directly from us, I think through Nathan, uh, with regarding not only our conversations with ACLU separately, but how the city feels about the, the, um, the league slash ACLU proposed amendments, which may or may not, just to be very clear, you know, work that well for us. But you, you know, on balance, as we all know, we'd like to be able to join together when the league is pushing a position, it's, they're so great to have as a lobbying force and we'd like to be able to say, yes, well, we'll sign on to their deal. And what I'm telling you is we'd like that to be the outcome, but I'm wanting to let you know that we want to reserve the ability to say, you know, that package still doesn't quite work for us and here's why.
And, and there's a couple of big negative, I think unintended consequences. One is the proposed legislation wants to include the payment of restitution in the, the scheme with, with the inability to pay. That would conflict with state statutes that now say that a victim is to be paid their restitution. So the current state of the law is restitution is a lifetime obligation that you can't get out of. Under the proposed legislation, you could get out of paying restitution if you convince the court that you have the inability to pay. The other big negative consequence, which kind of backfire in the face of the, of the ACLU, they want poor people to not have to serve jail, but if you follow the process that they are recommending to have hearings, contempt citations, the appointment of lawyers, they'll actually end up, they could be sentenced to more jail than they can get now and unless they bond, they're going to sit in jail longer than they would have sat had they just served it out. So it will, it could have, uh, it could backfire, backfire on the, the sponsor for the bill and the ACLU.
Well, we're always, you've got a lot on your plate here tonight, but we appreciate being able to double team you a little bit on, on this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl and Judge. Uh, I'll be looking for this, I haven't heard it, I haven't heard it come up yet. This is the first I've heard of it, so it, is it going to the Judiciary Committee?
Judiciary, tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. Okay, well, I'm on both health committees, so I, I really appreciate hearing from all of you when there's a bill coming up. If, if it's in the, one of the health committees, I hear about it like two weeks out, but in, when, when they're in these other committees, as soon as you can get a fact sheet to us, that's helpful and I hope we can have some kind of a, you know, uh, meeting between ACLU and CML because th, th, these are both very solid organizations and we'd like to have you be able to work out a compromise. And I know you're, it sounds like you're really working toward that goal. Mr. Brennan?
So Representative Shaefer, two other just bills I'll, I'll just cover real quickly, they're on our list. There is no bill currently on this one, but it's the notification of a mental health hold release and we support legislation that would provide for the notification to, uh, law enforcement of a mental health hold that is a potential threat being released. I, I know that you're aware of all of the issues that we have around mental health holds and mental, uh, health issues. We as a community and as a police department are very supportive of all of the work that's going on right now to try to address the state of the mental health system in, in Colorado, but that's one in particular we're interested in. And then the other, uh, and, and last issue that I have is the proposed ballot initiative concerning restrictions on pet euthanasia. Uh, there is an outside group that has come to Colorado to make Colorado a test case to amend, uh, CRS thirty-five eighty-one oh six point three, which is the Pet Animal Care Facilities Act. And essentially what it would do is make Colorado a no-kill state. So, uh, uh, animal shelters would not have the ability that they do today to euthanize some of the animals that they have to euthanize. Right now in Jefferson County in the state, we have about an eighty-seven percent success rate in terms of saving animals that are adopted, animals that are turned into the shelter, animals that we recover. And all of our animal shelters work really, really, uh, hard to try to make sure that we adopt out those animals that are best suited for adoption. And, and this would create some pretty significant impacts on municipalities and animal shelters. So it's not something that we can necessarily address because it is a ballot initiative, but it does vague the question of Colorado's initiative process and if that needs to change in today's world. So wanted to bring that one up to you as well for discussion, so thank you.
Well, thank you. That, the whole initiative process is problematic and understatement, and, um, these outside groups that come into Colorado with all their money and run these ballot initiatives, whether it's marijuana or a no-kill state, it's, it's very problematic. So, um, I'm, I guess I'm glad to know about that, that may be coming our way. But I'm glad to hear that we have an eighty-seven percent success rate on adoption of animals, that's, speaks well for our Jefferson County shelters.
I believe Heather Geier would be our next speaker or questioner or presenter.
Sorry, I haven't used that microphone yet, um, so I don't know how to turn it on. I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy Franklin, she's our sales tax supervisor, supervisor for those of you who have not met Kathy. She's, um, our in-house expert on taxes and so she's going to talk with you about some possible proposed legislation that we're, we're hearing about.
Hi there. Uh, on the theme of keeping local control local and home rule at home, we're asking you to preserve the city's ability to levy and collect its own taxes. It's not yet a bill, but I understand through my involvement with the CML Sales Tax Committee that there's a recurring conversation about standard definitions for sales and use taxes versus a standard base. The terminology alone is pretty confusing, so I want to help clear that up. In tax, a base refers to what is taxed, definitions describe the items. In the base, nor the only area that could be standardized without having a significant impact on the city's revenues. Sixty-nine percent of the city's general funds come from sales and use taxes. Most of our top twenty-five taxpayers who collectively account for over half of the sales and use tax, pay sales and use taxes on things like food for home consumption, energy used in production and manufact, manufacturing equipment and parts. All of those items are not part of the state tax base. If the base were standardized, the city would lose about a quarter of its general fund revenue. This would be a significant impact to our general fund revenue and it's why a standard definition is better than a standard base for this community. If and when a bill is introduced, please reach out to us about it, we'll certainly be calling you. Standard definitions are the way to make sales and use taxes easier for business, yet preserve the local authority to levy and collect tax. It really is a win-win approach.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear about that, Kathy. Uh, that's why I'd love to come to these meetings, I haven't heard of that one yet. You said there's no bill number filed yet, but you want a, you think we need a standard definition?
Exactly. Um, the definitions allow, you know, some standardization and simplification where taxpayers could create things called matrix, matrices or matrices to reference via software or manually for determining what's taxable on their invoices. Um, that's really where the problem is, is that we have standard definitions for the most part across the communities, but they have diverged greatly, um, from interpretations and things like that. But the base would really be a damaging issue for not only Wheat Ridge, but all the cities.
I'll look forward to seeing that and hearing from you. Thank you.
Those are some good points, they really are. Interesting. I'm sorry, did we have a, did I miss something?
We'll make it really quick. Senate Bill sixty-five, a ban on pledging business personal property tax revenue, it's a bad bill. Um, it's...
Bad, bad.
There you have it.
Got it. Just vote no.
Um, this bill specifically ties, um, a restriction which we view as a preemption to local authority on the, um, and they call them political subdivisions, so can mean local governments, special districts, school districts, and our ability to use that revenue for, um, bond financing, um, servicing. So, um, it, it's an odd restriction and we think it's an attempt to just eliminate business personal property, um, tax, but, uh, again, it's, it's a convoluted bill and we recommend that you vote in opposition for it. I think it's currently in Military Veteran Affairs Committee as of today's status.
That sounds like a bad place for a bill to be. So Heather, your wish may be granted. Well, thank you, that, it's the first I've heard of that, but it's trying to eliminate the business personal property tax. Did I hear you correctly?
Correct.
Well, I'm pretty sure it includes a bit to, um, not allow political subdivisions to use it for bonding.
Use it as a revenue source against, for bonding, but, but we think it's, based on the way it's written, it's, it's really the next, the next step is then to try to get rid of personal property tax, which, you know, we, we need every penny of revenue that we can get, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Johnston?
I'm on the agenda, but I think with very little to speak to, normally we'd want to, uh, flag or track any ordinances that we're looking at, uh, local control issues as it relates to land use entitlements, zoning subdivision, building permits, those types of things. Uh, at this point in, in the session, uh, there was one Senate Bill, eighty-one, that pertained, and this was introduced last year as well, pertains to the municipality's role in permitting plumbing and electrical inspections for school buildings, uh, which is currently the state's domain. Uh, that, just as of the last couple of days, that, uh, bill was postponed indefinitely, so that was good news in our mind because it was certainly something that we were, uh, monitoring and had some potential concerns about that we would have spoken to you about, but we won't now. Uh, there is a new bill that was just introduced, also in the Senate, uh, one oh three, which pertains to the phasing out of the ability to purchase, uh, certain, um, plumbing fixtures that are determined to be not, uh, water-conserving. Uh, we're monitoring that at this point, it was just introduced and we, we probably have some questions about how that would work relative to, uh, the building permit processes as well, uh, but don't really have any direction at this point. We'll, uh, we'll just update you as, as things come up and as that bill progresses.
Well, thank you. I have heard about that one. Uh, I don't remember from whom, but, um, I guess the concern would be who pays for the updated fixtures?
Correct, yeah.
It would be the homeowner or the landlord, right?
Yes, yeah. It would have more of a, more of an impact on consumers than it would probably on, you know, the municipality and how we enforce those rules. Um, it actually, as it, I just read it this afternoon, but as it's structured, it, it actually simplifies the city's role in terms of, uh, our role in requiring energy-efficient water, uh, plumbing fixtures, uh, but it certainly has an impact on the consumer that you'd want to be aware of.
Okay, very good. I'll, I'll wait to hear the number on that one, Ken.
That was, uh, Senate Bill one oh three.
One oh three, oh, it has a number, okay. Thank you.
I believe, uh, unless somebody else, oh, Janelle, um, Janelle Shaefer, please.
I just had, uh, three bills that have to do with liquor and, um, let's see, that, the one about, um, local governments being allowed to establish the hours and change it from seven to two, uh, or to, to stay home later, I know Denver's talking about doing this. Um, we just had a, we had a question ourselves, is, does it also allow for less hours? That's unclear in the bill, it just, so that's something that we kind of wanted to know. And then also, there's a part in here that says that, um, you can, um, change the consumption, hours of consumption by adopting an ordinance and then authorizing the other hours during which alcohol beverage can be served. Then we wondered too, is there a possibility that within that ordinance, could a municipality, um, incorporate a penalty for license suspension in that ordinance and say, okay, like you can only, yeah, you can serve beer, but you have to close at midnight or you have to close at ten eight PM or something like that. It doesn't say what the ordinance is limited to. So if you could find that out, that would be good. Then, um, a, a fine in lieu of a license suspension, we already do that in Wheat Ridge. Um, so I don't know, I, Bruce and I talked it over and I don't know if this maybe just has to do with statutory, um, municipalities. Do you know about that, Jerry?
I, I work that statute, I don't move a suspension. What the statute does is it enables a government to rely on, to rely on, I wasn't working there.
Okay. Um, for, for the tape, Mr. Dahl said he wrote the fine in lieu of suspension bill, um, some years back and he was unaware that they are tinkering with it. Um, it, what it does is, uh, the bill allows a licensee regardless of the length of an ordered suspension to petition. Now currently, for a fine in lieu of, currently it has to be fourteen days or less. Now if there's fifteen, they could do it. A fifteen-day suspension. Okay. And then, um, another, um, provision is, um, regardless of whether the licensee has had a license suspended or paid a fine in lieu of within, um, the prior two years. And currently it's, um, has to be, you have to have none in the last two years. And then there's another part about if your license has been revoked, then you, then you can't. Within the last years, you can't, but, um, maybe Mr. Dahl should be the one to, um, look at that and offer some good guidance for you. Um, and there's one more, um, about alcohol, um, which allows, um, it says certain alcohol beverage licensees to package wine produced by another wine manufacturer. Now, this is a little, um, confusing for us because we don't have any, um, wineries in, in Wheat Ridge. Um, I suspect that this has something to do with stuff on the Western Slope, but we do have one brewery. And the question was that it says it permits a winery licensed under, um, forty-seven four oh two, which is, says malt or Venus. And then it says a limited winery which is, has its own definition. And then a wholesaler licensed under twelve forty-seven four oh six, but we have a brewery that is a wholesaler. No, wait, he's a manufacturer. Okay, we, I think we cleared that up. But it, the question is, does it apply to breweries that are wholesalers as well? And then the last one is, um, not liquor-related, but is that House Bill eleven sixty-four about, um, a municipal election code? And apparently we're on the same page on that and I really, um, I heard this morning that it passed out of, um, Senate Affairs. that it passed out of Senate Affairs, and so it will be, no, it's, it's, it passed out of the House, it's going to Senate Affairs Wednesday, it'll have second reading on Friday, and should be hopefully enacted on Monday. And for those of you don't know, this is, creates a one-location, I mean, mail ballot election code. Currently, there's provisions in Title I and Title 31, and often they are conflicting, or it's confusing, or the information is absent. There are times when it'll go along and there'll be all these, it's kind of statewide things, party elections, talking about primaries and things like that, and you, you just go down and you go, no, that's not us, that, and all of a sudden it'll perk up and say, municipalities or special districts, and you go, oh, okay, that line applies to us, when none of this other stuff has. And so sometimes it's just difficult, and you're always juggling Title I and Title 31, and I really hope this passes. All the clerks in Colorado are really behind this, because that 1303 that passed last year created a lot of problems. And the, the little statutory cities, they can't, financially, they can't possibly do what, what that requires. So this will be good for them. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Janelle. I believe counsel received information on that last bill to which she was referring, and Representative Schaefer seems to understand that one pretty well. Pretty well. I've gotten on you here.
Pretty well.
As much as you can. Yeah.
Oh, I'll, I'll read it.
You got time tonight.
Well, could I make a comment or a request about alcohol bills or any bills? If you could just email me your opinion on them, my email is at the top of your yellow sheet. I'm sure you know it by now, because I have not heard about the alcohol bills, or about breweries that are wholesalers and those kinds of details. So I really appreciate hearing from you when you know when it's coming. Thank you, Janelle.
Maybe I didn't say, it allows these wholesale wineries to purchase other people's wine and repackage it and sell it at wholesale. That's what it does, but, no, we didn't think it was a big problem for Wheat Ridge.
Opportunity to email Representative Schaefer, and of course Senator John, as, as these issues come up. I, I think that it's genuine that they would like to know, they would like to know about it, because there are things that affect our city, and we, we learn of them, and we can go forward with that.
A couple of comments. First, I want to thank Kathy for what she's doing on the CML Sales Tax Committee to work on those definitions. It's, it's an extremely huge job. And when you look at trying to get those definitions to read the same statewide, it's a huge task. And I only hope that that task will keep those folks busy, so they forget about what they really want to do, which is to standardize sales taxes throughout the state municipalities, and even propose state, state collection, which is, you know, just absolutely opposite of the whole idea of home rural cities. So I don't know if you'll hear anything about that, but that's really what's festering Representative Conti's bills. The last couple legislative sessions have, have spoken to those. In investments, a couple of comments. A lot of our banks in Colorado don't take our money, because they're not selling, they're not taking government money for, for CDs or anything else. We just have a couple of banks now that we're working with. I see there's a bill to allow more investment in, investment opportunities in, within municipalities and with organizations doing economic development. I'll look at that more closely and give you my comments. Bill rates, whether it's CDs or bonds or anything right now, there's, rates are generally under a percent for five years, so we're not, you know, it's, it's not big business, I guess, right now. But at any rate, we'll look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. You can put that in writing, Larry, just to kind of a summary for me.
Will do.
Remember, I was taking notes as fast as I could. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, thank you, Mr. Urban.
I'm curious, Representative Schaefer, what's your progress has been on the licensing of pet groomers? Back in 2008, I had the distinct pleasure of participating in a training session with you when you first came into the State House, and I was working at the state, and they'd asked me to come down to provide some testimony on a fake bill, and it was on the licensing of pet grooming. And that was when you first came in, so just want to say thank you for your service to House District 24, and appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Zach. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve this House District, especially this community of Wheat Ridge. I live at 35 Hillside Drive, I forgot to state that. But, yeah, I do remember that innocent naive bill to license pet groomers. Is that what it was? Yes. Yeah, we have to, we have a little tradition down at the House and the Senate to baptize the newbies, and I actually took it seriously. But some of the bills are not too far from that idea, you know? Some of the things that are coming down, and only about three-quarters of the bills or two-thirds of the bills that come through will actually pass. A lot of them are postponed indefinitely, so. But anyway, I'll look forward to working with you all, even when I'm out of office, how's that? I might even be a volunteer on a city committee of some kind. So, thank you.
We have a lot of witnesses here.
Yeah, I know, I know, I just remembered that, yeah. I know you did.
It's the minutes, you got that in the minutes. Okay, I think we're, we're, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have served your city well, your state well, your, your district well, and we will be sad to see you go on, but delighted that we've had so much nice accomplishments.
Well, thank you.
I think we're done with that. Thank you, Mr. Starker. I guess we, the reason I'm saying that is because we can turn to Mr. Starker to keep us abreast of what's going on as far as CML is concerned. I can as well as Dr. Cog. And thank you again.
Well, thank you all very much.
Ken, shall we just go on, go on forward? Do we need anything? I think we can go forward, and we've got a pretty full agenda yet tonight.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Thanks for coming.
Okay, I guess we start right in with staff reports?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let's see, do we still have everybody? One, two.
Oh, do we have a full council here?
Four, five, six, seven, eight, they're all at the, end of the table.
Okay.
You ready? Do you want to start it off?
Oh.
We just need, council, or staff would like to get some direction from council on a few events that are, are coming up. Those include the, the Mayor and Council Retreat, citizen forums that staff is working on, and also the, the Town Hall Meeting, which is scheduled for March 31st. So those are all coming up very soon, so we'd like to hear from you all on, on what type of desired outcomes you'd like to see from those events, and any agenda items that you would like to add to those agendas. So, starting off, first of all, the, the Mayor and Council Retreat, you've all replied back, thank you, you're available for the Friday and Saturday, March 21st and 22nd. We have Marcia Hughes on board from Collaborative Growth to facilitate the retreat. So I know there were some questions and, on emails going around about timing and, and if it's two days or one day, and we'd also like to talk about what you would like to accomplish at that retreat, so.
One of my questions was, because I was trying to work with Patrick to set up the dates, is to get a feel for council, because I know the, I mean, my perception, the Friday one, we kind of just, it's kind of a dinner and then briefly talk, not too much detail on Friday night. And at least this was my perception of the last couple I've been to. And then on Saturday, we kind of dig into more visions and visions of the city and where we want to go next, and some of the, you know, maybe some of the steps to take to get us where we want to go and that type of thing. And, and I know that, I really feel that it's important, if at all possible, and I understand, you know, people have work obligations or family obligations and that type of thing. But I would like to see that if, if one day works best and that we are all able to make the one day, I'd, I'd rather work towards that than, than split it up and miss, have folks miss part or the other. So if all of us can make one day, then I would like to almost move, if, and, and hear discussion on what people think, but I'd almost like to just change it to one day.
The only day I'll be available is Saturday.
Well, I think, setting aside people's schedules, I think it's worthwhile talking about procedurally why it would be one day versus two days, not based on people's schedules. And I prefer, you know, I, I think we could do it in one day, however, I think that's a big day. And what I've appreciated, at least on the, on the evening sessions, is there's some formative information that kind of is set up in that meeting that then, that then carries over into the discussion on Saturday. And Saturday's meetings, although are more detailed, are not as, as lengthy and, and maybe as tiring as they could be if we tried to, if we tried to put that all in one. I would do one, I would prefer the format that we've got right now.
Having attended two of these only, I felt it was value to have the Friday night meeting. And, you know, I felt that the Friday night meeting, other than, other than provide us a more relaxed format to do it, I felt that we got some insights and, and were really able to sort of get those, go home at night, think them over, sleep on it. And I thought that was of value. You know, if this, if the particular time doesn't work for one of us, then maybe we should look for another date where we can go ahead and do that. But I thought, I thought the two night, or the two, the, the evening, the evening session and then the, the next day was, was of benefit and the quality of the discussion, the quality that we, that we were able to put to it.
I just, I do support the two-day. I think that, you're right, you, you get a lot of information in having that time to process what, what kind of direction you're going into on Saturday. It helps a lot, because otherwise, I mean, for, I don't know for everybody, but for me, kind of getting where we're going, and then, then doing the heavy lifting on Saturdays has been always better.
Okay. Since we have a difference of opinion, maybe we're going to need a show of hands.
Joyce, I don't, I don't really feel it's a difference of opinion. I'm fine either way, I just want to make sure that, you know, that everyone's able to participate and that there's a, that we set a forum that everyone feels comfortable, that, that they can participate. So I'm, I'm fine either way, I just want to make sure that, especially like on Saturday, where I think a lot of the discussion and a lot of, I think someone referred to it as heavy lifting, it sounds like we're all going to be there. So I think that's, that's good, and if we, you know, set up something for Friday as kind of an intro into Saturday, that's fine as well. I, I just, I just want to make sure that, I mean, I think it's good that we're, you know, that if we, we make it in a way that everyone can attend and everyone's comfortable, so. I'm fine either way. Two days is fine, it sounds like everyone's fine with two days, I'm fine with that.
Do we need to, would that suffice? Are we good with that now? All good?
Okay.
And those dates, we're satisfactory for the book.
Yep. Yeah, everybody responded, yep.
All right, so I think we've kind of got through that. There is another question, perhaps in regard to that, and that is the Town Hall Meeting. Maybe I'm, the question about with the citizens? Do we need to hold that up?
The citizens. Well, we do have, just to give you a little update, is Nate, Nate still here? No, he stepped out. As I mentioned in a, in a previous email, I think that you all have seen, maybe I didn't give enough detail, but we are, staff is looking at hosting two, two citizen forums, and the primary purpose is, is to get some input and feedback from them on our, the city's priority-based budgeting process. The priority-based budgeting process, and I apologize for the, the new folks, you probably haven't been, you're not 100% up to speed on, on what this is, but it's a new budgeting process we started this last couple of years. And, and a big portion of that is to kind of vet your outcomes or your goals with, with your citizens and your residents. And we have not done that yet as part of this process, and we were planning to use Chris Fabian and John Johnson, who are with the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, and they've been working with us for the last two years to implement this process with the city. And they suggested that they could do this. The timing is, is kind of coincidentally, coincidental that we could do it right before the retreat, so we thought we could bring back the information that we get from these forums and, and bring it to the City Council Retreat and, and let you know what the citizens said about your, about our goals. But, you know, it's, it's going to be facilitated by somebody, council's more than welcome to come. Last year, we, we did a similar type of forum. At that point, you, you had all decided not to come, to leave it just to staff to facilitate, and we would bring back information to your retreat. So we'd like to hear some, some discussion from you all, and if, if that's, if you want something, if you want to participate in those forums, or if you want us to make sure that we get additional information from those, those citizen groups. But a good, a good chunk and focus of those forums is going to be on our priority-based budgeting process, so.
I may not fully understand what you're trying to do here, but this does not feel right to me. This, I, this almost seems to me, it feels to me, like you are communing with the citizens and developing priorities without the input of council. And I don't understand why you chose to go that way.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're not developing priorities with council, with, with the citizens. We are taking what priorities council has already put in place and asking citizens for their input on those. And then bringing back that information to you guys at, at the retreat. I, I believe the reason last year council decided not to attend the forum was to provide kind of a non-political, non-formal setting where citizens felt maybe they, you know, they didn't have elected officials maybe putting pressure on them somehow, or, or, you know, just, just a different environment. There was, you know, you can go either way. We've done it both, both ways throughout our history. We're not creating priorities without, in the absence of, of city council. It's, it's a verification of what you've already put in place, and then bring that back, information back to you to say that, hey, this is what your citizens are saying. You know, you have other opportunities, Town Hall Meeting, District Meetings, to have more of a one-on-one discussion with your, with your citizens. This is just a, a different, kind of like a focus group, and most focus groups are usually kept pretty sterile and, and, and kind of non-partisan or non-biased to get, you know, true reflection. And staff does, and we have facilitator that runs it, so it's not, staff is just there to take notes and, and record the meetings. So it's just, it's just a tool. It's, you know, we can do something different if you chose, if you choose to.
Do I hear you saying then that you're testing the policies, the Do I hear you saying then that you're testing the policies, the priorities that the council has set?
Correct.
With the citizens to see if they agree with council.
Correct. Correct. And and get feedbacks. Like if they don't agree, it's like, well, what do you what do you what do you suggest in in place of these priorities? Or what do you think our priorities should be today? But this is what council is moving forward with. Please help us, you know. And then e- even get down into the weeds a little bit. And it's like, well, how how should they meet those those goals? It's like, what type of action steps would you like council to take? You know, they could get as specific as, you know, build a park here or or, you know, focus more on economic development in this part of the city or or get get as specific as possible. And then and we record all that and bring it back to you.
And this is superior to a scientific questionnaire in what way?
Is it superior? No, I don't. It's not superior to scientific questionnaire. It's just, it's just, it's a focus group tool. And it's, it's just another way to get citizen input. There's many ways to do it. This is just one we're proposing. And it's kind of what we did last year. So we could always change that if you'd like.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable with the process.
Okay, that's fine.
I agree with Tim. I I went to the one last year at the Sons of Italy as mayor and I just think that, you know, the groups that are there are usually pro and con on something. I I don't think it's really objective. I know we try to make it objective, but I I'd rather hear from the citizens myself than rather be told what staff heard. And that's what would happen on the Friday night meeting at when on the retreat. So I'll be going to the meetings as one member of council, whether, you know, and just I always just hope that you have them in the evening so more people can attend and then obviously council members could attend if they work. So I'm not going to try to change it because I don't think that it sounds like it's kind of set in stone anyway, except for maybe Tim, but and I myself. But I I'll be going and I'll I want to hear firsthand from the citizens rather than being told what they said.
Well, I think we did have a good discussion last year about about this. And I would say I accept the, I accept the description of it as a tool. Now, we can decide whether we want to use the tool or not. But it is, it is a tool to get feedback and that's that's what it's for. It is decidedly not, and I recall this from our conversation last year, a town hall meeting. That's something different. So if people do go, if we do go, I would strongly or just not, you know, not to participate because that kind of is not what it is. It's not a dialogue. It's not a conversation. It's not a, it's not a back and forth. It's not an assertion from us to them or to some extent from them directly to us. And that's why we set it up that way. That's why we said last year, we feel like we shouldn't go, you know, to in order to avoid the setup that would be citizens trying to talk to us as as individual elected officials on something versus kind of talking to a facilitator, guiding through questions of of priority and policy and and things like that and kind of taking away, taking out the personalities and and the districts and and these other other things from from the exercise. So I would caution us strongly to to, you know, to either abandon it altogether as a tool or leave it as it is, because otherwise I think it diminishes the the effectiveness of it if we're going to show up and and try to in some ways participate. Now, I absolutely, if you if you go and sit in the side in the back or whatever and that's it, that's great. I think that's that's fine. Just, I mean, as an observer, I think that's great. If we if we're going to go in, if if we're going to participate, then I think we we should cancel the deal altogether and it should and it's a, because that's a town hall forum and and we have three of those at least this year. So I don't, might as well, might as well just let it be, let it be one of those. So that's just, that's just my my take on it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a clarification. It looks to me that the forums are scheduled for March sixteenth or sixth and the 13th. So our retreats are March the 21st and the 22nd. So I don't see that it would be a scheduling conflict. So if, I don't know if Mr. Tuttulio, if that if that generated the conflict in scheduling.
No, my point is. To the retreat? No, I I just think the Saturday is where I'll be. Any Saturday you pick, I'll be there on a Saturday. I'm just not really interested in being on there on a Friday to socialize and have dinner and talk.
And I and I don't think, I I wouldn't characterize it as as a socialization dinner sort of thing, but.
My first question on the forum was, is is it my understanding that this is not interactive between, I mean, is it interactive between citizens and the facilitators and that's it? Is that correct?
I believe so, pretty much. Like I said, we have John and Chris coming from Center for Priority-Based Budgeting. And they've done this with many communities to, again, it's just to verify the priority-based budgeting results that staff uses to to create a budget and bring back to you. And if if you remember, we had, city council has goals, four of their four overarching goals. But then as part of the budget process, we have these six priorities that we that we use to determine how to allocate resources. And we would like to eventually, hopefully, as part of the strategic planning process, Nate and Heather, you may want to sit down or when you get some food. Yeah, it it would be great, maybe if we can consolidate those and just get one set of council goals and or budget priorities so that we're all working from the same set. But so, I don't know if you heard council member Wooden's question, but this, the forums that we're planning, they're not set yet. We haven't sent out invitations yet, but are, it's be facilitated by John and Chris and it's be a set agenda and ask and questions and answers.
Yeah, I mean, the idea is to have a table for each result area. So say there'd be a table. First of all, there'd be a bit of an orientation to priority-based budgeting and and why it's important to set priorities and then try to allocate funding based on your community's priorities. But right now, we have those six result areas that staff have come up with and we've been using those to help kind of guide our budget process. And we want to get feedback from citizens on whether or not they think those are the correct, from their viewpoint, the correct overarching result areas that the city should be focusing on. And so we'll get feedback from them. So they'll say things like, what does it look like when you're in a safe community or the streetlights on or what things have an impact on that? And so we went through a process with staff in regards to that. And so we created these definitions so that when we're looking at all the programs that we do, we can rate them on how well they help us achieve those results. So now we're just going to go through that same process with citizens. So that first night, people will be able to go to a table for safe community and give their input on what it looks like to have a safe community. And then we're going to take all of that feedback, look at our current result definitions and see whether or not they're appropriate as is and whether or not they encompass all of the concepts that people brought up at these sessions. If not, then how can we change them to incorporate the citizens' input? And then, like Patrick said, we wanted to bring those to you guys because the the concepts are really high-level, big kind of result areas. And then, you know, if we could get those to align between what staff is working on and what city council is working on, then we can start to create action items underneath those.
I I do believe that there should be some type of an arena where citizens can give feedback and give comments on the budget and on priorities without elected officials present. And if there's going to be interaction between citizens and elected officials, that would be, as I see, the town hall or the other district meetings. But I I support an arena where citizens can talk freely without elected officials present. And so my my thought is not to have elected officials there, but if they are there, that there be some kind of an agreement that what the interaction would be, if any. And and I personally don't believe there should be any at that, at the forums.
What's interesting, priorities and results area?
I mean, they're, I would say you could use them interchangeably. It's just the terminology that they use. So they call them, they say they're result areas because those are the results we're trying to achieve. So our overarching result is to have an economic vitality within our community. And so the way we define economic vitality might be different than another community. So that's why it's important to get people's feedback on what does economic vitality look to you or what does a safe, attractive neighborhood look like to you? Because they use examples from other communities where, say, they had a result area focused on the environment. And and one of the definitions had something to do with starlings, a type of bird. And and they were like, oh, you want to protect the starlings? You want to do that? And they're like, no, we want to kill them because they're invasive and we want to get rid of them. So i- it's a way for each community to themselves define what the results are they're trying to achieve. And so that allows you to look at programs and say, is this program helping us achieve these results? And if so, it is a priority to us and we want to fund it that way. One of the things that we found that is somewhat difficult is because some things are harder to quantify and harder to link to the results. And so we started to kind of have them as as, well, part of them are governance, but then other ones, they support other programs. So we have to show that link there because police on the street are more important than the uniforms that they wear in having a safe community relative to one another. But you still have to have uniforms for police officers. And that's one of the examples I'll give. So like, uniforms might be in quartile three or four, whereas, you know, the officers responding to emergencies are in quartile one.
Most of these people don't, probably know what quartiles are, so. Explain those.
So, yeah, that's probably getting a little deeper. But we planned on giving a, at the council retreat, doing a little bit of background on what priority-based budgeting is. But basically, we went through and did program inventories. And so we had several hundred programs that we went through a process and rated them. And then based on that rating and peer review, they get distributed into quartiles. So there's a certain amount of programs and money that's spent on quartile one programs versus quartile four. And so your your goal over the long term is to try to move monies from quartile four programs or stop doing them if they're no longer needed and and focus that money on more important programs.
I guess my follow-up to that is, based on the anatomy of a priority-driven budget process document, it says the governing board also needs to be closely involved in setting their priorities. The priorities are the foundation of priority-driven budgeting. So the governing board must be must fully support them. The role of an elected official is to set the results the organization is expected to to achieve. Developing the priorities must also be a good place to involve citizens. Some communities have used traditional means of doing this, such as citizen surveys, focus groups, and town hall meetings to engage citizens in helping establish the expected results for their community. Others have taken other approaches. And so I'm not opposed to having a citizens forum. I think that's great. What I think is important is that for us as the elected officials to fully support the priorities, we need to be able to, first and foremost, our number one priority is to listen to the citizens of Wheat Ridge as to what their priorities are and hear it from them. And I don't think any citizen in Wheat Ridge is afraid of talking or calling any one of us and and in some way stifled by our presence. I would expect that it would be more of a encouragement that we are taking time out of our day to participate in that and we encourage citizens to do the same. And so our presence at a meeting like this would would hopefully encourage others to participate as we are leaders of the community and and seeing this as a priority for us to develop this process. I I think it's important for council members to be there and to see firsthand what's going on and to encourage that discussion. And I don't see where our participation or attendance would in any way stifle any kind of communication with anybody. So I would be in favor of attending and participating fully.
Could you define participation?
As, I I think before I'm an elected official, I'm a citizen. And so I would participate as a citizen in that forum.
This is for the citizens to give feedback on the council-driven priorities. And it's simply a feedback. So, you know, if we're there, I do I do feel that some people will not feel comfortable giving feedback. And that's my concern.
But I think that's where we need to have then, mult- multimodal, if you want to use that phrase, a variety of different ways for citizens to provide feedback. If they are uncomfortable speaking with their elected official about what their budget priorities are, there needs to be other avenues for anonymous or other ways for them to.
I see that that's the town hall. Is that the town hall where we interact with the citizens and the forum is where the citizens can give feedback without elected officials present?
Yeah, there's numerous options. Yeah, definitely.
Can I hear from somebody I haven't heard from?
So, I I mean, I'm hearing what you're saying, but if you're holding it basically as a charade, is that the right term?
Shret?
Shret, sorry. I knew it was up there. So there's, I mean, each table is a separate topic. So even if we say I did come and I was sitting there, I wouldn't really be able to hear what everybody really had to say because each individ- there's going to be six different conversations going on at once. So, I mean, I guess I'm not opposed to it. I am opposed to us going in there and telling them, this is, I mean, to me, the, what this meant last year and what it means to me this year is is that it's their opportunity to tell us what they think. And and we don't give them as, I mean, other than them coming and speaking for three minutes at our dais or coming three minutes for a study session, we don't give them a lot of just uninterrupted time to just tell us what they think. And so to me, a forum is is this opportunity for them to say whether we're on the right path or we're not on the right path. And it's, I mean, and we have to make goals and we have to try to reach them. And we don't want to make goals that we're that are completely unattainable or not even close to being where we needed to be. But I don't want to see us going there and then telling them, well, yeah, you say this, but what about, you know, I mean, then it becomes more, it it isn't about their opinions anymore. It becomes a discussion. When you add, interaction is no longer their opinion, it's a discussion. And that's not what it was meant to be. It's meant to be an opinion-giving arena. So, I mean, for me, if if we want to have council interacting with them, then I'd just as soon not do it. Because I want them to give us their opinion. I don't want to have a discussion with them, except at a town hall.
So I can see both sides of it to be present, to hear what citizens have to say. Again, I also under- hope and understand, as Zach says, that they'd also call and and feel comfortable with that. Now, I can say, three maybe, or was it four years ago, I was a community member in one of these community forums. And I do think that council was there because I met Tracy, I'm, I think I met the Karens. I hadn't known the Karens. I think I met Davis. But it was, it was almost like they greeted me and then they were gone. You know, they they didn't really play a role. So the greeting was nice, but what I really enjoyed as a community member when I was there was that, I think in Zach's list, he said a focus group or a town hall, which I think town hall we've got covered, we're going to do. I see this more in the focus group section, as you outlined in your in your section, that it's more an opportunity to me, opportunity to meet other members of my community and hear their viewpoints. It was funny, I think, one of the things we were talking about on my table was curb and gutter. And it was interesting to see as someone who's been born and raised with curb and gutter, how and sidewalks and all that stuff, how there are people that are adamant against no curb and gutter. You know, so it was interesting as a, as just a community member, to have that time to see others' viewpoints from the community, to also understand, hey, here's what the council has to look for, this is their priorities. Would you prioritize it in that same way? If not, why? Help us understand. And you, and to me, so, so I can see both ways. I can see it, it's nice to interact with the council, but I can see, now, I can say I wasn't one of them, folks might have been more apprehensive to speak up and 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 state their viewpoints. And if I knew that I was going against a council member's, you know, thoughts, you know, so if if George felt a certain way about something, I don't know that I would say, that's the goofiest thing I've ever heard, if I knew Mr. Pond was sitting over there. So I do think, you know, I I see both sides. I've been a community member of that in a community that I was just becoming more active in. And I liked that neutral place. And that's just my, I mean, I would, I mean, if if we as council want to go greet people, thank them, and do that type of participation, that's fine. But I really don't think that But I really don't think that, um, we should engage in, well, this is why we thought this and this is why we thought that, because then again, you're taking their voice away. So the, so that's my feelings. And again, I do think we have those set things to do in town hall meetings. And if we're really adamant and strong that we need to get more with the folks, then let's have more town hall meetings. Um, but I think it's, one is one thing and the other is the other.
What I seem to be hearing more of, and, uh, is that it, there seems to be a general consensus kind of stirring up that, um, council members or, or myself could attend. Uh, but what I'm hearing is that, that less engagement is, sounds more desirable. I- is that the direction that, that we're, that we're having here? Mr. Fitzgerald, please?
I'm actually okay with that, if, if we decide to attend but not talk, you know, see, see if this process works. I would like to ask though, how will, how will the invitees be chosen?
We were going to send a postcard out to every resident, so all they have to do is RSVP. But it will be two weeks in a row. But if they are now not able to attend, we're planning to have an online tool for them to be able to provide feedback as well.
That's how we did it last year, and we, it was fairly successful. I think we had over sixty attend and, you know, and honestly, I think that's one reason we decided to do it again as, as same format as last year. Cause I think that was the number one comment we got out of it, says, "Please do this again."
We also passed that, we were given a pile too, that we could give to our neighbors and stuff.
Yeah.
And encourage folks.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be open to anybody.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Starker's been trying to say something?
Oh, I don't, I, I was just going to more substantially weigh in. I get, I get, um, offers through my business community to, to have people come in and survey my clients, to tell, tell me how I'm doing. And so when I, when I look at this, to me, we're going out to the staff to go to the citizens and say, "Tell us how we're doing in this bud- in, in this priority-based budgeting thing." So, um, you know, I, i- if we're going to do part of it online or mail-in card, comment cards or stuff like that, um, you know, I think, I think we should, and we do offer, offer other forums for our citizens to engage with us in a, in a one-to-one or in a direct, you know, communication. This to me is a different, is it, it's more of a feedback, you know, how, how are we doing, so, I.
And, Mr. Pond?
Uh, I, I won't oppose, I won't oppose this, but I would just state again that I think just for clarity's sake, and, and I appreciate what you read, Zach, cause it, it outlined a number of tools. This is just one of them, and it's a focus group, until it's not. Until we do something to it that makes it not a focus group. And then it becomes something else, maybe a town hall meeting and maybe something else. So I think we just need to be honest about that. If we're going to keep it a focus group, let's keep it a focus group. Now, the focus groups that I've been, uh, on the buying end of, you know, have a, uh, one-way glass. Okay, so, just saying, right? That's how focus groups get done if you're paying for them, is that, you know, the people who are coming in are not like, you're not, and, no offense, because I see exactly what you're saying, but you're not greeting them at the door and go, "By the way, I'll be behind the, the, in five minutes, I'll be behind the glass and, uh, don't worry about me." I won't look, you know, it, it's, you know, and so, i- i- you know, so I'm not going to oppose this if this is the way we want to go down, but I just want to, I just want to restate the fact that, that, that in fact, the, the somewhat getting to the purity of, of the tool, I think was the intent that I recall last year, with, um, uh, us trying to kind of get to that point. If we're going to go away from that, again, I'm not going to fight that tonight, but I just want us all to think about that because I think it does affect people's, uh, participation.
Yes, just one last thing, I, I wouldn't buy onto the premise that this is a focus group because it, it hasn't been sold to us as such. It's a citizens forum and that, that, that does, the forum doesn't necessitate a back and forth between multiple parties. And if it is a focus group, that's a whole different set of requirements and, and structure to it, which I would agree that a council member shouldn't be part of a focus group about how council's doing. That would be, I think, untoward. So I would say that as a citizens forum, as it's been described to us, uh, that does suggest a public forum and, and where citizens are able to speak their mind. And as a council member, I'm interested in, in hearing what they have to say firsthand. And I, and I guess I just don't, uh, maybe it's because I'm new to council, I just don't see us having that level of gravitas, uh, walking into a room and everybody just shutting up and not speaking their piece. I think citizens are all adults and they're going to say what they're going to say, regardless of whether we're there or not.
Ms. Davis?
So, okay, this is, this is the last thing I'm saying, and I agree, George, you're right. I've been in focus groups and they have been behind the mirror, um, on if I like my laundry product or not. Um, but I, I do think, and, and I think Zach, a good point as far as our, how we name it. Uh, but I do think the intent is more of a focus group intent. So if we call it a community focus group, then I think we do that. And I think we do also, as a council, need to set guidelines and ground rules that if we decide that it's going to be a focus group, um, where we want the citizens' feedback on how we're doing and what we can do differently, et cetera, then we need to set ground rules on if we attend or not. And, and then if the choice is we do attend, then how do we act once we attend? So I, I would, I would like to consider, because I think the intent is more focus group-like, that if we change it to a community focus group, I'm fine with doing that.
Just.
Wait. Uh, I, I think it's time to, to, to get to the question, actually, uh, but go ahead.
Just to pound one more nail in the coffin. Um, I think the ultimate citizens' focus group is an election. And that's, you know, that's what, that's there for, is to say whether we're doing a good job or not. Um, I, I think if it is a focus group, that, that's a whole different structure, and scientific elements behind that than, than what this is being proposed as. So, um, if we're going that direction, and I'm not opposed to that, that would be a good idea. I just, I want to make sure we're clear about that on the front end.
Yeah, because not all electorians are incumbents, so it's hard to phone up and come up focus group line. Somebody did, so I don't know that I would use that same comparison.
I'm going to, I'm going to try to, to get this sorted down. Let's start with a simple question of, we haven't even got to the point whether we're going to attend or not. But if, if council, if, if elected officials attend, do you want to engage or not? And so I'm going to ask the question, if council wants to attend, do you want to, uh, council members, elected officials, the guy down the street, do you want to engage with the participants? Uh, give me a yes, or a raise of hands of yes if you do.
Define engagement.
Engagement means, thank you, engagement means that a comment's brought up or a question is ans- answered of the, of the elected official, we do respond. Or do we from the get-go, the staff or whatever announces that we are here to hear, here to listen, but we, there's no plans of us engaging with them or joining in the conversation?
I think there or after.
After.
I mean, I guess my worry is, is people might fear retaliation if I say something or if I'm saying something that's, uh, comes across and, I just, just my thoughts, I just worry about.
Okay, would a simpler question be, first of all, do we want to attend? That, let's, let's, would that be the better question? Does somebody have a thought that direction? No thought, all right. Raise your hand if you want, if you feel that, that you want to be there. That we should be there. I have two people that want to be there, three people. Would I therefore assume that the other remaining people would not like to be there?
You want a vote on that?
I would like a vote on that. You would not like to be there, one, two, three, four, five. All right, so whether we participate or not is moot, because the vote is that we do not want to be there. Now.
Wait a minute, they can't tell Zach and I or Tim that we can't go. And you can ask the city attorney that, I'll be there whether you guys say you're not going to be there or not. And I don't know what, what the big scare is, that if we're sitting in there listening to our constituents.
I very much want to know what our constituents believe. I very much want to know their feedback. To me, that's not the issue. To me, it's giving our constituents a forum and an ability to give feedback on our, our direction and our priorities without us being there and without us making a comment.
I mean, what we're doing is we're just taking away the right of a citizen to come and be able to talk about a city government without his elected officials in the room. Why don't we, why don't we give them the opportunity to come and meet with staff? Tell them what they think about the, the job we're doing or what, uh, how this city's going without us being there? Give them that freedom.
I think they have that freedom whether we're there or not, but.
I, I would say the exact opposite, that I've heard from citizens, business owners, and other members of the community who have been afraid to speak their mind to city staff for fear of retribution, and they would prefer to speak to me. And so I've seen the, the, the exact opposite of what you're saying.
How about another suggestion, how about we just cancel?
Uh, that's what I was just going to say.
We're, we're fine, cancel, if it's going to cause this much disattention between council and we can't get on to, to bigger important items, I, I would, I would just like to cancel. It's not worth, it's not worth your time or our time.
I'd, I'd just like to make a suggestion that in the list that Zach had, um, the questionnaire was in there. Maybe an online questionnaire, so that there is some way for citizens to give.
We'll have a citizen, we're working on the citizen survey this year, which will go out to all residents. Um, and so they'll have an independent, um, scientific opportunity. You'll have a town hall meeting, you have two district meetings, we'll cancel this. We won't move on with the priority-based budgeting portion of this, that's my recommendation.
Council goes with that one?
Going to all, Patrick, all sessions?
Yes, yes. It, 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 the survey? Oh, it's, I'm sorry, doesn't, it, it's, it's, there's a random selection, it goes to three thousand, random. Three thousand scientific, we can talk about it later, but it, three thousand is the scientific, um, threshold to, to get, um, scientific results back, but we could always up it, um, it's going to cost more mailing and.
There's, if I could just really quickly add a couple things, because Nate and I met with the National Research Center last week on the citizen survey. We're going to be giving Patrick some options and recommendations in about another week. And those recommendations will also come to council, um, some different best practices that are, communities are using in terms of, um, the non-scientific and the scientific collectively in terms of administering the survey. So there's some options for you to consider.
Yeah, Tracy, or.
Moving on.
Let's, let's move on.
Let's move on, that's right. Um, retail marijuana business operating fees?
We have town hall meeting to discuss also, do you want to discuss that? Or should we leave, I think that was.
Do we want to set the date for that?
It's set, it's the fifth Monday in March, March thirty-first. Uh, we'd kind of like to get some direction from council on what they would like to do at the town hall meeting.
Can we add a component on the budget pace, priority, the budget, the priority-based, or whatever? You know what I'm talking about, can we add a component to the town hall?
You can do anything you want.
And maybe we can have, because I know at, at past town halls, we have tables along the outside that kind of where people can talk, get more information. Could we not have the six tables in and people could essentially just write on a, on a clipboard their opinions?
Yep, that'd be a great idea.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
If you're asking the question, what, what would I like to do? I'd, I would like to have full information about the financial position of the city and what we need to do to, to make, to get us in a, in a better financial position. So I think that would be a major thing that I would think we ought to be doing.
That's a good one, thank you. Anyone else, or do you want to, as you think about it as well?
Well, not much, it's February third, we need to start working on it. So the more direction you give us, the more, the quicker we get it put together. If, if you want us to bring back an agenda of, of what you think we'd like you to do, we'll do that, but.
I mean, part of it is, is that, I mean, we really do have to talk about sales tax. And we kind of didn't do it last year, and we really, part of that, what you're talking about is the money is, is, do we have enough to keep going? And I, I think this town hall meeting is probably our best first touch with citizens about why we need it and why it's important, or if they just totally disagree with us, you know, why they, you know, again, what do we need to get rid of? So I think that would be a good conversation.
Mr. Fitzgerald again.
I think, uh, probably this, you know, there are certain groups of people who are very interested in certain topics, so I think we ought to be prepared for those topics. I'd like to have a, a list of all the new businesses on Thirty-Eighth, for example, and all the things that have happened, all the positive things that have happened, uh, that we could hand out or at least, or talk about.
Okay.
Ms. Davis?
So, March thirty-first, the big town hall?
Right.
With everybody, okay.
Correct.
All right, sorry, I was back on marijuana. Yeah, I, I'm wondering if maybe a portion of our study session, if we could set up some topics, maybe perhaps send to you what we feel, and then as a group, highlight what we feel the top ones are.
And we may come up with another one at the retreat, our own retreat.
Yeah. That'd be almost too late though, wouldn't it?
Yeah, absolutely, well, I mean, you could always bring something up, but we'll probably get a, nice to get an agenda out so people know what your, your town hall meeting's about, but it doesn't have to be all-inclusive, you could always bring something up. Okay, so what I'm hearing is, um, financial situation, financial issues of the city, um, sales tax revenues, revenue potentials, Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Um, we, we could do our priority-based budgeting results, um, piece also.
The one thing we didn't discuss regarding the, um, the strategic planning retreat is the location. Do we need to do that?
Um, I, I think if council would trust staff, I think we could probably do that on our own, but unless you want to give us direction on that.
Are we good with that? All right, good. Can we move on to marijuana now?
Literally, or?
A ten-minute break then for marijuana, for the, nevermind.
We also, do you want to take a check on time, Mayor? Um, we, we did, we did put quite a few things on the agenda, but, um, we, we were going to keep an eye on the clock and if, if it's getting too late, we're not going to, um, do every item. So I have staff here that's still for the Pierce Bike Street improvements. If, if you don't think we're going to get to it tonight, should we send them home or? We still have medical marijuana, which shouldn't take, not medical, retail marijuana, it shouldn't take too long. It's just, um, talking about fees and then, um, the first bank, um, uh, loan renewal for the renewal at Wheat Ridge. So it's up to you guys.
I'd like to recommend that we finish the, up the, uh, urban renewal and bring back the bike paths so we can really get more information on it without being too late.
Re- rotate them? Is that what you're saying?
Skip, he said skip Pierce tonight.
Skip the Pierce bike paths and bring it back to the next study session so we don't go too late tonight. But I think the urban renewal is important because they have to look at financing.
Yeah, that loan is up April, April fifteenth, so we have to get some options.
Wouldn't you think this could come back, two weeks from tonight? That's President's Day, so four weeks from tonight?
Or can you put it on the February tenth regular meeting?
I, you know, I.
We could do it after the February tenth meeting, do a quick study session. Um, it looks like the regular meeting so far is mainly consent agenda items, nothing mark, large, so we could do a quick study session afterwards.
Well, if we can, yeah, if we can do that on the tenth, that's, uh, you know, that's a week from tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I, I would rather, I, I would do that, but I don't want to.
We'd like to keep it moving, but, yeah.
Farther than that, yes.
I agree. We're going to put that on the agenda, act for approval on the tenth, and I think it's fairly quick.
I think that will be fast.
Okay. Maybe, Dol, Mr. Dol, do you want to start with this one? Maybe that other mic, I think, use that other one, I think that works.
Fast, hurry, hurry.
Oh, so, so we decided Pierce Street, yeah, you, Scotty, you can leave if you'd like. Yeah, thanks for sticking around.
Do you want to start that, Patrick? Want to start that handout around?
Um.
Or not?
Yeah, if, if, I don't want to confuse them, it's all, maybe they need it.
All right, fine. Well, and now for something, as Bullwinkle would say, for something completely different. See, most of this group gets that, that's great, I love to see that. Uh, well, the, the, the council previously adopted ordinance, you know, regarding licensing of, of retail marijuana stores. Uh, and, uh, that ordinance allows the, uh, the council to set, uh, operating and licensing fees. Doesn't have to be in the ordinance, and it's actually easier that they be set separately so that as we need to change them over time, that we can, we can easily adjust that. Um, uh, as of January one, those operations can operate. Um, uh, as of January one, those operations can operate in the city, and so we need to get our licensing and operating fees in place. Uh, the staff has put together kind of analysis of, of what it actually is gonna cost in staff time to, to monitor the, these licenses in terms of checking on the operation and just making sure that they are complying with our requirements. And as you know, there's fairly detailed requirements that are good ones, and I think the industry supports all the requirements for safety and ventilation and all those things. We honestly haven't gotten much pushback, and I think from the industry on that. Uh, but it, it's an administrative cost, and so that's, you see the, the fees that have been described in the, uh, on the second page, attachment one, and they're exclusively for operating costs, which would be our cost to monitor, uh, the, the, the progress of the licensee during the year. We probably should add, I think, uh, some licensing fees for the initial cost of, of taking a license application to begin with and processing it. And we don't have that in the list now, and I'd recommend that we, we, we do. The costs that you see are pretty much our costs. I will say that as compared with, and we did a real quick survey, and got a couple of answers back. We got Boulder, Central City. Um, I've heard what the state is, is asking for, and those are pretty big numbers. These numbers that are seen in the attachment are quite low, and they're our best, I think, analysis of what the actual costs are. And this is not a situation where you're to make money necessarily. Um, but, um, the Boulder fees, for example, for, for, for licensing are about twenty-five hundred dollars. Their operating fees annually, two thousand dollars, so about four times as, as much. Now, it may well be that they're bringing more staff to the, to the party on that one. Party, was that I said that?
Yeah.
Uh, but it, it seems to me we definitely need a licensing fee column, which we don't have now. Uh, it's probably fair to say that other cities are charging between twice and four times as much as we have on this list here.
And, and keep in mind, too, that, yeah, our, our fees are based on just, um, the time for our tax division and our, um, police department, the time they, they put into it. Um, so that's how we calculated that. Also, the, the state is charging two fifty, um, for a, a conversion of a medical to a retail, and the ci, this, we'll get half of that. Um, and they're charging twenty-five hundred for a new retail license, and we'll also get half of that. So, um, so we kept our, our local fees pretty low, but.
As a matter of kind of, uh, in, in a sense, you know, these are local businesses, and there's the, the, there, that's the other way to look at it, that, and, and we've been pretty business-friendly in this community. So, uh, whatever feedback you wanna give us, I think maybe one question is, what about the operating fees? Are they more or less in the range, or should they be different? And then, secondly, do you agree that there should be licensing fees?
Mr. Tullio, please.
So, Mr. Dol, I wanted just to clarify, on attachment one, that is what you're proposing? Or that's what the costs are for the fees, staff time?
Sort of both, I think. I mean, it's, it's what our best estimate of the costs, and we're just proposing to recover costs.
So just from, from my opinion, I would recommend that we double these, because I know that some of the, I've talked to some of the business owners who have medical marijuana in the city, and they're not hurting right now. So I think that they could afford, I think it's a fair assessment to do what other cities are doing, and I think doubling these fees would be at least what I would recommend. That's my, that's my suggestion. Then the other thing was, is that, um, is this gonna be done by ordinance, these fees?
No, I think ordinance allows it to be done by simple motion. That way you can adjust it up, down during the year easily.
Okay, so the question would be, um, how is, how is the city gonna communicate out to these bit, local business owners and the public that we've, have these certain fees in place?
We'll send them a fee sheet. Once it's been developed, we'll, they'll just get mailing from text.
We do have, at least two that have already, um, been licensed with the city, and, and they, they're aware that council's working on a fee, and that they fully expect a, a letter to be coming from us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just send out a fee sheet, you know, and then as we revise the fees over time, which I'm sure we'll do over time, uh, they'll just get a new fee sheet.
And can, could staff put that in the EE newsletters and some, maybe in the connections, those fees, just so people know that we're not giving away the farm on this?
Sure, for, it's a pretty limited group of businesses, but, sure.
So my, my, uh, suggestion would be, we at least double these. That's just my, my suggestion.
Others?
Mr. Starker.
Go ahead.
Well, I just, you know, I operate a, a restaurant and bar in this, in this city, and I just paid the city nine hundred dollars to renew my liquor license in this city. So I don't know why we would, uh, propose a fee that's, you know, forty percent less than that.
I guess, uh.
Any more input? Ms. Langworthy?
Well, I would, I would say that the operating fee, we should double the operating fee, but we should also have a licensing fee, because we still have to manage that. This, this is, I, I mean, it's a privilege for them to have that business here. It, it's, it's not a requirement for our citizens. Something we have to have. It's not a hospital. It's not a car repair. It's not, um, a grocery store. It, it, it's recreational. And as such, I think that, that it should be a thousand for, or double that, and then some sort of licensing fee on top of that.
And that would probably be our, our, just our typical business license fee, which we currently have. It's twenty-five bucks, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, other cities obviously have, you, you know, Boulders at a license fee twenty-four hundred, Central City at, uh, uh, twenty-five hundred. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying, you know, in the, in the range of fees out there, there'll be a bargain on that level.
Exactly.
This doesn't necessarily have to be a place you make a lot of money either.
Mr. Pond?
Just for clarification, I vaguely recall when we were going through the last, uh, study session before we adopted this ordinance, there was a discussion about fees. And so I'm gonna state what I heard, so that you can tell me I heard wrong. And that was that fees were not a place that you could, that you could just make money on, that in fact they, they needed to be tied to a reasonable, um, justification of, of what those are. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't double this necessarily, but if I heard that correctly, it means you need to justify why they would be a thousand versus five hundred. And I just want someone to tell me that I heard wrong.
I don't think you heard wrong. Uh, and I think what you're seeing with some of the other cities with larger numbers is maybe one of two things. Additional staff, um, in, in Boulder, probably a more complicated, not only larger staff, but more complicated process and just more regulations to be enforced. And secondly, probably the old adage that if you, if you estimate something's gonna cost you this, it's, a very wise person once told me, "Do your best job of estimating, include all the things." And then he leaned over and he said, "And then multiply by two and hope you're even close." And so I think that honestly, that's probably what's going on in those other cities as well. So it, it's probably well to, to, to inflate it up. And, and what I'm hearing is a license fee as well. Uh, one thing I think probably oughta be added is a criminal background check fee at our actual cost.
That's part of our estimation is included in that, in PD, yeah. I mean, you could break it down. We could've broken it down, but.
All right, fine.
So I'm hearing, uh, uh, doubling is, is kind of the general consensus here, or is that not cutting it?
Nope. I think there was a, I think Zach had a question.
Comment on this. I think that, uh, it's never a good idea to impede business where, um, they have followed all the laws. That being said, I think it's appropriate for us to be cautious in estimating the impact that retail marijuana may have on city staff or the city in general. And while I think staff has done a good job in estimating the assumed costs, we won't know for sure until we go forward with this, what the actual, you know, impact to city staff will be. And, and for that reason, I think these fees are not as high as they should be in order to err on the side of caution and give us some room to be able to, um, maneuver here. And so I would be in favor of doubling or tripling the, uh, costs, knowing that even in, in that estimation, we're still not hitting anywhere close to what other cities have done. So, um, I just think, while the city's done a good job at estimating the costs, there are certain costs we just don't know about at this time, and it would be better to have that upfront from them and then have them come back to us at a later date and say, "These fees are onerous," or they, uh, "There's a reduction in staff time allocated to this type of activity, and, and there's a case made that we need to reduce them." But at this point, we don't need to, um, go at a low-ball effort here. We need to make sure we're covering our costs, because there is a cost to the city with retail marijuana.
Ms. Davis?
So I just have a quick question when you're figuring out the fees. Are you just figuring out, is this dollar amount just like the processing of an application and, you know, the paper aspects? Because I guess the other thing that comes with this, and like it or not, but we all saw in national news, the marijuana shop on the corner of Sheridan and Twenty-sixth or whatever, across from Sloane's Lake. And I, I think that there's a lot more to it than just an application fee. I mean, I think that there's a lot, you know, i- if it's, uh, police support or, or more surveillen, surveillance and, and those types of things to bring in mind. And I do think that tripling these fees, um, we're still staying, as Zach said, um, we're still staying within our community standards. I mean, I don't think that we're, we're, we're so low or so high. I guess I should say that, I mean, that's what other communities around us are doing. So, again, I'd rather, uh, look at it in a year and say, "Wow, you know, we didn't have as much issues with, with police, uh, with the police force needs," or whatever it might be. I'd rather. Or we did the other way. So I would rather meet, you know, kinda come up to where our community is, um, and the communities around us, I guess I should say, um, rather than make sure that it's a good place to upgrade your retail business in Weveridge, 'cause it's less expensive.
Oh, um, I agree. I'd like to, to take a shot at a consensus here that we would take these annual operating fees and triple them.
All the way down?
All the way down, triple them down, um, for operating fees. That's my first consensus.
We agree with that one?
And, and then the other, uh, consensus I was gonna ask for is to take these current fees and make them the licensing fees. So it's five hundred dollars to get licensed, then you have a fifteen hundred dollar annual operating fee. So that's the other consensus.
I don't think we, I, I disagree. I think that that, I mean, what George pointed out is true. And while we don't know exact cost to up, you know, to manage these, we definitely have a direct cost associated with a business license. And so if we, if we do a very large business license fee, then it's gonna look very obvious that it's, it's, you know, a two-tiered system, one for everybody else and one for them. I mean, I think we kinda addressed it in our, our operating fee, but the business fee is just, it's a business license. I mean.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I agree with that. I'm, I'm okay with tripling the fees as shown, but I think this is just a, a business, and if we make the fee higher than other businesses, it's just obviously punitive.
And Mr. Starker?
But, uh, Mr. Goff, as I understand it, the licensing fee is the cost to the city to, to administer the license.
Correct.
So, uh, wouldn't they pay for a criminal background check? We do that for liquor, for liquor people.
We do, and that, that's why liquor is, is, we don't do criminal for just a, just a straight business license, but.
Right, but.
Liquor, so that's why it's more expensive.
Liquor sales, and if you equated liquor sales with marijuana sales on a retail basis, there's some, there's some basis for doing that.
There is. You're right. So it's similar.
Would we not, uh, look at a license fee that at least incorporated our costs in the thing? With a, with a fair, you know, because you've got to engage the police staff in doing that, and I'm not sure what those fees are.
Yeah, there is a difference than just a typical business.
Yeah, this is different than, uh.
And I'm fine with that. I just don't want to blow a shit.
Well, I guess that was a, that was a question. So the, the liquor licenses are more expensive.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So that's what I was trying to get at, is maybe not dub, maybe not taking that, but what is a liquor license cost, Bud?
Depending on your class, it's all over.
Well, I mean, for my restaurant and beer and liquor license was nine hundred dollars a year. I'll ask the clerk, does that sound? Well, I don't know. They send, they send you a bill if you wanna operate and, you know, and.
That's.
I don't know off the top of my head how much that goes to Weveridge, how much goes to the state.
My recollection.
The state goes, some of it goes to the state.
It's a few hundred from, all the cities are represented every time I see those applic, and they vary, are right with class. But it's not like twenty-five. It's not like two thousand. It's always is like three or four, five, somewhere in, that's always something like that.
So my consensus was to look at not just twenty-five, but, 'cause that's awfully low, but not to, so that's why I thought these were consistent with more of a liquor license, if you're paying nine hundred dollars a year, so.
I guess I would support a, um, an opera, or a, a license, I guess. We're talking about the other one as an annual operating fee, so we're back on a, on a license that would, that would recover our cost for the inspection, for the background check, for all of that, and, and the.
And that's what we estimated, five hundred, two hundred, so that's, I think that's what Mr. Tullio suggested. So license fee of five hundred and operating fee of fifteen hundred, for example. Looks like we got it. Cut. Thank you.
That was harder than I thought. We've got that one, so to the First Bank loan options.
Yes. Everybody ready for this one?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we're talking about, um, our Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth project. Um, if you read the memo, um, hopefully you did, you, you kinda got a history of what's going on. But to get, to cut to the chase, um, we have an outstanding loan with First Bank for purchase of three different, or well, actually two properties at Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth. Um, the outstanding balance is two point two million. Um, there's a maturity date of April fifteenth of this year. Um, we've met with, um, First Bank to renegotiate that loan. They've given us a couple of options. These are kind of just examples, but, um, there are a couple of options that we, we, we can consider to renegotiate the loan. Um, do you want me to go into the whole history? Does everybody read the memo? Do you have questions? Um, do you want me to go into the whole history of it? Um, no? Jerry's saying no? Let me, I'll go into a little bit more history about the specifics of our current loan. Um, the bank required deed, deed of trust, um, on the, on the, again, as collateral, but they also, um, required a, a cash security deposit. So we have about one point nine million, I think, set aside, um, in Larry knows, in, in CDs at First Bank as security, plus the deeds of trust. Um, so a couple of options the bank gave us. We, we could, we could renegotiate the loan for the, for the balance, which is two point two, seven, five million. They, they gave us a, uh, three-year maturity date. They're projecting the interest rate about three and a half, which is great. We, um, got, uh, bank-qualified, double tax-exempt. If we, if we kept that same type of loan, they would reduce our cash deposit, security deposit to one point three, nine, seven, five. Um, and our debt service would stay the same, which is the urban renewal's paying twenty, just under twenty-five thousand a month. And then in three years, we'd have a balloon payment of one point five. Um, option two, which is kind of the, the polar opposite of this, is so that we don't have to have a cash security deposit. Um, we, we, we use a portion of the security deposit to pay down the loan to eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred. We have the same terms, three years, three and a half percent. Um, then we don't have the security deposit. Debt service decreases to just under ten thousand a month, and in three years, we have a balloon payment of six hundred and seven thousand. Um, our hope is to sell, um, the remaining two properties, um, for about, I think it's in here, one point three million, I believe. Um, a portion of that has to go, has to pay the city back. Uh, we have a loan with the city of three hundred and fifty thousand, so a portion of the, the property sales will go for that. It'll also go for, um, a s, a strapping signal that we need to put on Vance in Forty-Fourth, which is part of the agreement. Um, so that would leave us with, um, a little bit of money left over that we could use to pay that balloon payment in three years. Um, so tho, those, those funds are, are restricted, that are part of the cash security. Um, they're restricted in a CD. They're not part of the general fund's seventeen percent minimum reserve. Um, they're, they're set aside, so this wouldn't, if you spent those funds to pay down this loan, it wouldn't impact that. Um, unfortunately, the sale of the property is not enough, it's not going to be enough to pay for the original purchase of the property, plus the infrastructure improvements that the city, um, has made. Um, so it's, the loan's gonna have to be paid off with, with, um, funds from another source at some point. Um, I, I'd recommend that we, we pay it down, at least to a certain level. Um, and, and that would also, either option actually frees up about almost six hundred thousand of restricted funds in a CDs, and that will come back to the general fund reserve, so you'll have, um, close to six hundred thousand more in your general fund unrestricted reserves. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, the, the story, but I'll answer any questions.
Ms. Langworthy?
So I have a couple of questions. I thought that, I mean, and it's been a while since we did this, and so I'm, I'm trying, I know we, we had promised a three fifty, but I thought the million six was us, too. we we had promised a 350, but I thought the million six was us too.
The million six?
Or whatever, the million, oh, the million nine. Was that not city money too?
It is city money, but it's it's just a cash reserve and it's sitting in a CD. It's used as security, so.
So it wasn't our, we never actually gave it to them. We just kind of held it there as opposed to having it somewhere else. Okay. That's what I wanted, I couldn't remember all of it. And then also with the the town center, that we have increased how much of the sales tax they get back in order to cover the debt service on this, correct?
Correct. Urban Authority is now receiving 100% of the the sales tax increment that comes off the Safeway development. And right now, it's about 400,000 a year is what the city gives to the Urban Authority on an annual basis to help pay this debt service and and other things.
So would that, I mean, would we, I mean, I guess at some point in three years, when this debt service is supposed to be done, because even though it, because option two lowers the debt service down to 9,000, which is, what, 15,000 less? Wouldn't they be able to use that 15,000 to to pay down the debt service quicker?
That could be an option too.
Because I would like to, I mean, for me, what I'd like to see is getting that town center at least our half back again, because we were supposed to get it half back some time ago and we gave it to them to try to to cope with this. And at some point, we would like to get it back.
Potentially. I mean, there's other projects that the Urban Authority is also working on, so it's always they're they're, Christie just signed a bunch of checks this afternoon or tonight and they they live paycheck to paycheck, Urban Authority does, to pay their bills. So it's, that's a discussion, I think, for the future on what you, how you want to continue funding them.
Mr. Starker?
And so there's, is there a rate cap?
Yeah, it would be for the three years in their estimator. This isn't fixed yet or set, the three point, there's they're thinking about 3.5. Is that what you're asking, the interest rate?
No, it looks to me like this rate floats.
Oh, the interest rate?
Interest rate.
No, it would be fixed for three years, but we don't know if it's going to be 3.5, 3.7, 3.2 right now. That that's an estimate from the bank.
It says here we can purchase a lock for another 1%.
Oh, does it say that?
Yeah, it does on the term sheet.
Oh, the rate may be locked with with in 90 days of closing. Probably 1%. Refundable at loan closing, yeah.
It also says that this is for discussion only and does not constitute a commitment.
No, it isn't. This isn't, this is in final terms. These are. Yeah. Yeah.
So, but I mean, it is a fixed rate loan. When it closes, it locks and.
Yes, that's my understanding, but we'll make sure it is if it is. For three years, yeah.
I just wanted to ask Ms. Davis, would you recommend option one or two?
I would. I would recommend option two.
I would too, because I think that's less debt, it's a better situation for the city. I'd like to ask for consensus for option two.
Well, that's done.
So I I get option two. I mean, I see it's better, but that 1.3975, when the the properties are actually sold, the city will get that money back then. So we'll, will we get the three, because that 1.397 is city money, right?
It is. No, you will not be getting that money back.
So if we we take option two, we eat, the city eats 1.397. If we, well, we are anyways, but I mean, in option one, we only, in option one, our money is held and we get it back. In option two, we give them the money and we never see it again.
Well, and but in option one, there's going to have to be a funding source to pay this off anyway. It's going to, it's either going to come from the city. It's just you're stretching it out.
That's not going to disappear.
I just want to make sure we know that we're we're giving up 1.4 million.
You're going to pay it soon.
You're paying, you're making a big payment on a mortgage.
It's the infrastructure on this project was almost 2 million and then the properties didn't sell for what they were purchased at, so. It's definitely, it's definitely a subsidized project by the city for sure.
But we're not, we're not committed on the rest of the property, are we?
Committed.
Committed to sell it at what we've.
Oh, we we do, we do have contracts with Wazee Partners who built the senior housing. They do have contracts. It's not, I don't think they've been signed yet. Christie, have they?
No, and I think some of that's, they're always time limited and it's something.
Yeah. We can get out of, yeah. They're they're waiting to see if they get a tax credit from CHIFA. Yeah.
Mr. Tullio?
Well, just to kind of reiterate what's been said earlier is since Wheat Ridge is built out and it's brown fields everywhere, all these projects are going to be subsidized, whether it's 38th and Kipling or Wadsworth or 44th and Uppen, there's going to be tax dollars going somewhere else rather than the coffers at City Hall because we're redeveloping all these different projects. And that's just the nature of the beast with urban renewal.
All right, have we got that one settled?
Yes, I think we do.
The bike thing has been pushed on to February 10. We can move on to elected officials' reports. We're not doing bad.
I have a quick one. I have a quick one only because it's time sensitive, so I figure, because the next one is tomorrow. So the Wheat Ridge aging well has been working to come up with something. I believe it comes April 7th to a study session. But what Wheat Ridge has gotten that we heard a little bit is a NORC grant. And what that means is essentially Wheat Ridge got 3.2, and Nathan would probably be able to be exact, it's either 3.2 or 3.3 million dollars to be spent over the next three years on seniors in Wheat Ridge, specifically to seniors in Wheat Ridge. So what this is, is a brainstorming session. They they're really looking to spend this money on seniors as they want it, not as we think they need it. So they're having four sessions. The first one is tomorrow at the Active Adult Center. They'll have one specifically at Highland West and one at Wheat Ridge Town Center. And so if you know of anybody who, I mean, I know that they say it's 65, but what they're, what we've learned is that it's really kind of starting at 75 when people start needing services. At 65, they're still doing fairly well. But if they would like to come and give their opinion about how to spend $3 million, they'd be happy to hear it.
I think it's nine, I think it's a million, 990 some thousand, 300,000 a year for three years.
Is that what it was? I thought it was more than that.
Yeah.
I want to tell you, Nathan knows the number is way better than I do, but I thought it was more than that. All right, so it's 1.3? I got it reversed?
I think it's spread out over three years, like 300 some thousand a year.
So I transpose my numbers. It's 1.3, but it's still a lot of money.
No, it is.
Any other reports, urban renewal?
Yes, so urban renewal, with that in mind, since it was a big discussion today. So about, oh, six or eight months ago, we had an urban renewal kind of 101, kind of going back to basics as far as, you know, as as an urban renewal authority, what we could do and and the options. And so one of the things we're going to work on is, I think you'll probably see Jesse come in and we're going to set up a kind of a little one-page, a year in review, or the last two are projects in review. So we're going to present that. And I also am really excited because not this Thursday, Friday, but next Thursday, Friday, I'll be attending a conference, kind of a urban renewal, community development type of conference here in Denver to get some more ideas as far as what we're doing. One of the field trips I'm really excited about was it's a, it was LODO, the whole LODO and it it's, I don't know, their their tagline was kind of from from hobos to.
Nodo to LODO.
Nodo to LODO or something, but it was, yeah, it was. So it was really exciting to see like, to see some of the things that what they did to turn around some of that area. So I'm really excited to do that too. So I'm hopeful that in the next few months and two couple of years, that we'll see a lot more work even with urban renewal and some new ideas and and things like that. So, but you should be getting a formal report from us in the next month or two.
Great. Mr. Starker? Okay. Your meeting this week, your first meeting, aren't you? With the Business District, your first meeting will be this this week, I believe. Right. It's wooden? Oh, Mr. Pond. Who's that perking their head up there? Nothing. Mr. Tullio?
I just wanted to let council know that Mr. Starker and I met with the staff on the Eastern Wheat Ridge project last week. And that's a project where they focus on a certain part of East Wheat Ridge. Right now, it's the Richards Hard Estate area, 27th through 32nd Avenue. And as a consensus, there was a request that we would try to engage the Housing Authority to at least do one project in that part of town to, whether it's a scrape or to build or a rehab. And Mr. Starker was going to contact the the member that's representing the council and I'll talk to, I'll probably give Mr. Abbott a call, Tom Abbott. And so hopefully we'll get a project in there that'll work well, so.
Genevieve, I'm surprised you didn't mention there is a group, there is a.
A few weeks ago, Joyce and I attended a meeting called HEAL, which stands for Healthy Eating, Active Living. It's put on by Jefferson County Health Department and Livwell, Colorado. And the HEAL city designation is a designation that cities are looking to promote policies and procedures that help these activities. Wheat Ridge is really uniquely positioned because we already have a lot of these policies already in place. We have Lutheran Hospital, who's very much behind us and helping us get the designation. And a lot of the surrounding cities are Vada, Golden, Lakewood, they're also either already have the designation or in the process of getting it. So we're going to be looking into this a little bit more and coming back to you at a study session with how we can move forward on that.
The HEAL designation is pretty neat, actually. It 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 would be good for our city and Lutheran is pretty excited about helping us with it and and making it, shooting, hitting one out of the park with it, as Christie would say, meaning making it a very strong designation, not just a proclamation we stick under, something we can actually be proud of and boast in our economic development. Okay, I don't think we have, do we, are we done?
I'm done.
We just want to hang out and talk or? Okay, then the meeting's adjourned.